Good evening, councilors. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order the Committee of the Industrial Community Development. First, before we start, Councilor Daigle, you have the floor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am going to ask that Councilor Peach step in my place and recuse myself and step out of the room for the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Daigle. So in attendance is myself, as Chair, Councilor Manning Martin, Councilor McGinn, Councilor Rozignol, and Councilor Peach, if you would sit in, please. Thank you. We've gone back and forth a number of times on the proposed Mill Overlay District, and I think we probably have it under control. Community Development Director Bellevance, if you'd come forward, please, and discuss the changes and see if we can move forward on this. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Kurt Bellevance, Director of Community Development and Planning. Yes, I've been before the Committee a few times in regard to the Mill Overlay District and amending the zoning, each time taking suggestions and recommendations from the Committee in regards to making some improvements to the Mill Overlay. And the last time we met, there was a discussion in regards to how we define the Mill Overlay and whether it was too vague or not. We took a look back at how we would do, how could we better define that. It was difficult without signaling or centralizing that in regards to the Pulaski Street. We looked at several areas throughout the city which could possibly be defined as Mill Overlay because of the old buildings, the way they were used, the way they were assembled. And so what we did was, we made this, tried to make this ordinance as similar to other ordinances within the zoning which would be, would stand alone. So we have like the BC area, we have the DDD, those are standalone districts. So what we're doing is presenting the Mill Overlay as a standalone for the Pulaski Street area. That way, there's no confusion as to whether that can be applied to other places like Walnut Street or Foster Street or off of Linfield Street and those areas. So by doing so, we changed the language and moved a few things around and then specifically called out the Pulaski Street area as being defined as the Mill District. So the other piece of that was in regards to the Planning Board and Site Plan Control. So what we also did was taking a chapter out of the current zoning ordinance, which is under BC, where it defines basically add-ons for that district and what the applicant would be required to do. So we did that in a similar manner to the Mill Overlay where we added additional design criteria, but it would still follow the same process as the Planning Board Site Plan approval. So there would be no exemptions in regards to that. Those were the two major areas that we tried to address, and we feel pretty confident that we did. There was one comment in regards to discussions with Councilor McGinn under Section 6.15.1, which is establishment and boundaries. Under the third sentence, it reads, "The MOD is an area which includes but is not limited to at least three or more mill buildings and are all properties immediately, and all properties immediately abutting a defined mill area." We wanted to add in under three or more mill buildings and all properties to include within the same underlying zoning district immediately abutting the defined area. So that tightens that up a little bit and adds a little bit more, as I said, tightens it up a little bit more to refer to this exact district. So those were the changes that we had done as compared to the last time we were before the Committee, and I'd be happy to answer any questions in regards to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bellevance. Could I have a motion to receive 8H, please?
So moved.
Thank you. You heard Councilor Rozignol made the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Any questions to Mr. Bellevance? Councilor McGinn, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No questions, just a comment. I did, as Mr. Bellevance indicated, have an opportunity to review this pretty thoroughly. I think he really did a, the Department did a fine job capturing all the feedback from the multiple go-arounds, but this most recent one, they did it in a couple of pretty simplistic ways, which is, I'm a fan of, and I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna review all the points that he did, but I think they captured everything. And with that one minor edit that he mentioned at the end, I would be supportive of advancing this with a favorable recommendation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilor McGinn. Councilor Peach, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to thank Mr. Bellevance and Councilor McGinn and the other councilors who've taken the time to review this, provide your comments throughout these last few meetings we've had. I think we have a great document, and I would be in favor of supporting this out of committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Peach. Councilor Rozignol, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Mr. Bellevance. Thank you for the revised document. It really captures, I think, what the council was looking for as far as the last round of recommendations, and I think this is a great document, and I appreciate the hard work that you've put into it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Rozignol. Any other councilors make a comment? I'd like personally to say, Mr. Bellevance, you were very patient with us, and thank you for your diligence in getting this done. Councilor McGinn, you were spearheading a lot of the changes, so thank you for that. And what's the will of the Committee? Councilor McGinn, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would move to advance the proposed language, which we have before us in, I'm sorry, it's Item 8H with the one edit to Section 6.15.1 that Mr. Bellevance made with a favorable recommendation to the full council. So moved.
Thank you, Councilor McGinn. If there's no further comments, I'd like to do a roll call vote, please.
Councilor's Peach?
Yes.
Manning Martin?
Yes.
Rozignol?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Bellevance, very much for, appreciate your hard work.
Okay. Thank you to the Committee for, you know, these are how, the zoning ordinance is pretty important, so it's good to work with people and get the feedback. Makes it a better product. Thank you.
Appreciate your help. Thank you very much. All right. Like to move forward now on Subject B. Proposed zoning amendment redesign, redesignating the following parcels from Residential R2 to Central Business BC. Assessors map 085 parcel 002H and numbered 10 Monroe Street, and assessors map 085 parcel 0021 and numbered 12 Monroe Street. Can I have a motion to receive 8I, please?
Make a motion to, so moved.
Thank you, Councilor Rozignol. You heard the motion. Councilor Daigle, are you back for, Councilor Peach, do you want to?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
You're okay, Councilor Peach. Thank you. Attorney Kelty, you have the floor, please.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, my name is John Kelty. I'm an attorney. I have offices at 40 Lowell Street in Peabody, Mass., and I'm appearing on behalf of 10 Monroe Street, 10 Monroe Realty LLC of East Boston here in Massachusetts. The makeup of the LLC is comprised of two gentlemen, one of whom lives here in Massachusetts, and right here in Peabody and has developed property off of Lake Street. We have asked that these two parcels of land, which are identified in your ad as parcel 85, map 85 parcel 211 and map 85 parcel 21, that these be rezoned from R2 to Business Central. These were properties that had at one time been a portion of the filing of development plan for the condominiums that are located at the corner of 6 Walnut Street condominium, that five-story building. These were being utilized as perhaps at the outset, potential parking. The land was owned by the condominium, and they put it up for sale, and eventually my clients here at 10 Monroe LLC, they were able to acquire it. When I was at the Planning Board meeting last week, I spent some time pointing out the surroundings and the type and nature of buildings that are located very nearby us. And I had cited 5 Central, which is the corner of Central Street and Walnut Street, and that's BC-zoned, it's 13 units, it's three stories, used to be, now is, the home of Nex-Mex on the first floor. And 18 Walnut Street, which is Peabody House, that was developed in a BC zone, 1982, it's my, that's 140 units. 58 Walnut, which is 128 units, which is the subject of 40B currently before the Zoning Board of Appeals here in Peabody, the site of Travel Leather and Tan Right. 20 Central Street is the Fair Weather Apartments, that's 88 units. And my concern moving, or my thoughts moving forward were that we are in an area where there is some dense development, we're in an area where we are hoping to revitalize. I took a look at the MBTA zoning that cities and towns are being asked to embrace. It turns out, I thought this might be a good site because of our proximity to the MBTA bus stop that is located right in Peabody Square. However, we are not an MBTA host community, we are adjacent to a host community, Salem, and I think that we're going to take some of our density and locate it up on Route One because of the easy transition from Route One into Boston. So I do believe, though, that it's important for the council to understand that with the development of this project, which if you were to provide us with this zone change, I would be required to file for a special permit for the actual development in which the council would get to look at design, stormwater runoff, et cetera. I would also be required to go to the Conservation Commission, given our proximity to the North River and floodway. I am suggesting that if we are given the zone change, we would first file with the Conservation Commission and shortly thereafter make our application to the City Council for the special permit in which we would be complying with the design standards set forth in the BC GBD zoning district and be designing a building that would fit the needs of our downtown community. We are of the opinion that we can develop 14 units on that property. We are of a mind also that we would provide more than adequate parking. Parking would be on the ground floor, no basements, no cellar, and then following the parking on the ground floor, we would have two stories, two 7,000 square foot, 8,000 square foot per floor spaces. The current feeling is that we would be in a position to emulate the kind of construction, although we've not engaged an architect at this point. We have an eye towards developing the property to look and feel like the project that has been developed on the corner of Boston Street and Bridge Street, adjacent to Dunkin' Donuts. They're a kind of, I don't know that they are purely Victorian or colonial, but they seem to replicate some of the Victorian designs seen both in Boston Street and Salem, but also that's a design that seems to repeat itself through Elm Street, parts of Central Street. Some of those buildings have actually been, the corner of Central and Stevens has actually been refurbished and adhering to the type of development and design that it had been at a prior date. So we're hopeful that the council will, there would also be three affordable units as part of inclusionary zoning requirements that could certainly be, although it is contained in the zoning, it could certainly be a condition of any special permit that the City Council were to provide. And for us, the first step is to ask the subcommittee, following the positive recommendation made by the Planning Board, to ask the subcommittee to report this out favorably to the full council. And if we were, then, given the zone change, we would go forward further in the design. I'm happy to answer questions that the board may have.
Thank you, Attorney Kelty. Councilor Rozignol, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I toured this parcel when we were talking about the car wash, and at that particular moment, it was completely overrun. It was a complete and utter disaster. It was just a complete eyesore. There was trash everywhere. Now, through this proposal, I toured it again, and they've done a great job cleaning that area up. I think this change is inconducive to what is adjacent to the property. If you're standing on the property, right to the left of you, if you're on the property, is, as Councilor Kelty mentioned, a four-story building. I think that this would be an appropriate change of zoning, and I am in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Rozignol. Anyone else on the Committee like to speak? Councilor McGinn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This type of a zone change in the parcels in behind BC is the type of change I tend to object to. I, you know, the developments that the attorney mentioned are, you know, on main streets, which is what's intended by BC, Central Street, Walnut Street, and so forth. I understand that there may be some mitigating circumstances here, and I certainly understand that Councilor Peach and others may have very sound reasons to support this. I just wanted to be, make it known in advance, and Councilor Peach understands this based on conversations with her previously, that I won't be supporting the zone change because I don't, I don't like this type of zone change here or in other places adjacent to the BC that are, that carve out pieces of, particularly of R2. You know, there is, there is a point that people should be aware of, that, you know, they're doing this for a very particular use within BC residential, but, you know, there's also the potential that a lot of other things could go in there by right once the zoning changes, that BC, that frankly would have no, would make no sense whatsoever on the tiny Monroe Street. So anyway, again, I certainly respect that other councilors may feel differently about this, but I just wanted to make it known that I would not be supporting this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilor McGinn. Any questions, comments? Councilor Manning Martin, do you have your hand up?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I am apprehensive about this request as well. I'm very partial to R2 zoning, and I don't, I agree with Councilor McGinn to come forward with the project and ask for a zone change. There's no, nothing's etched in stone that that's going to be the project that we get in the future. Land, there could be a sale, could have a new property owner, and then you've got a zone change open to whatever, which isn't what is being presented to us, even theoretically, this evening. So I'm very uncomfortable with this request for a zone change. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Manning Martin. Any other Committee members? Like, Councilor Daigle, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I echo the thoughts of Councilor Rozignol, and I think in this case, in this situation and the surrounding neighborhood, it is appropriate, so I would be inclined to support it. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilor Daigle. Any non-Committee members? Councilor Peach, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am not in this Committee, but I would be in favor of this if it's reported out favorably. I have, if other councilors aren't aware, and just for the general public, this lot has sat empty for over 30 years. It was owned by the 8 Walnut Street Condominium Association and was recently sold to the current owner, who had an approved project for, it's actually two lots that are together, there's nothing actually dividing them, had an approved project for four duplexes that are four-bedroom, which, in my opinion, and in the neighbors' opinion, four bedrooms can bring a lot of people to a very small area where the, you know, potential project, which would come before us as a special permit, would be two bedrooms, which would be significantly less impactful to this neighborhood. The neighbors are very adamant they would like to see something done. They have seen this lot, driven, they drive by it every single day because it's a one-way street, it's their only way out of their neighborhood. And prior to the current owner, there have been boats disposed there frequently, there's illegal activity that occurs there. The people who live in the condominiums that face that street, you know, they witness these things, they also look at this eyesore. And I've spoken to people who live in the condominiums and the people that own the property or live in the property adjacent to this, they are in favor of the zone change. We have been in discussion about what could potentially go there in this new zone. I think the property owners have been very upfront and willing to work with the neighborhood. I understand there is, as Councilor Manning mentioned, we don't know what project could be proposed, but this is surrounded by other BC areas, I think it's appropriate change, and I think it would benefit the neighborhood to develop and improve this eyesore that's been there for three decades. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Peach. Councilor Manning Martin, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Councilor Peach, you mentioned that the lot was vacant for 30 years. Do you know how long the homeowners, the condo association, had it up for sale? I don't think it was for 30 years, but how long did they put it on the market?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I have no idea. I know they wanted to develop it themselves for larger developments than what we're talking about, and the neighborhood did come out against those, and they were shot down before they even made it to the council floor. So I know they had plans, they wanted to develop a very similar style of the four- or five-story building that they have with their parking on Walnut Street, and the neighbors felt that was too dense for the area.
Thank you. I asked that question because I, over the years, had spoken to some members at the homeowners, the condo association, and they were looking to sell it, but they sat on it for a really long time. So I just didn't want folks to have the impression that they couldn't sell it because of the zoning for 30 years. It was whatever other internal conversations and things like that. So I don't think it was up for sale for very long, is my point. Thank you.
Councilor Manning Martin, Councilor Turco, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, I'll be brief. I, Councilor Peach said it very eloquently. My general thought at the beginning of this was to not support this until I did a site visit, I saw the surrounding area, I saw a vacant lot, that ultimately I don't see any hope for developing unless the zone change is done. I understand the concerns of other councilors, that it could be something else. I think this, the owner of this lot has, he's, you know, he has a plan. I believe that's what he'll do, I believe that's financially feasible for him. It fits in the neighborhood. I, you know, the initial proposal with the two duplexes, I actually have, I like the larger project better in this neighborhood with these buildings that surround it. I think it fits, and it, it just, to see a blighted cleaned up, a blighted lot cleaned up is, you know, great for this city. We have a couple of them in my neighborhood that I would love to see cleaned up, and I have a feeling that if, you know, we were to not support this, that we'll be looking at that lot in another decade, the same way that it is. And there's multiple lots on that street, as you know, that are in deplorable condition, so it's a start to actually bettering that entire neighborhood. So I would support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Turco. Any other comments? What's the will of the Committee? Councilor Rozignol?
Make a motion to support the Planning Board's move to recommend the City Council adopt zoning change from an R2 district to a BC district regarding 10 and 12 Monroe Street. So moved.
You heard the motion by Councilor Rozignol. Any comments on the motion? There being none, roll call, please.
Councilor's Daigle?
Yes.
Manning Martin?
No.
Rozignol?
Yes.
McGinn?
No.
Gould?
No.
Motion fails three to two.
Thank you, Attorney Kelty.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Any other comments by the Committee? If not, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourned.
Thank you. You heard the motion. We are adjourned. We are adjourned. Good evening. I'd like to call to order this evening's meeting of the City Council's Legal Affairs Committee. Attending this meeting are committee members, Councilors McGinn, Melville, Peach, and Turco. We're also joined by Councilor Dagel, Councilor Manning-Martin, Councilor Gould, Councilor Rozagnal, and Councilor Gamache. We have one item on the agenda this evening. It's the proposed land acquisition for Zero Sherwood Avenue and Zero Spring Pond Road. We're going to be joined this evening by Mayor Ted Betancourt, as well as City Solicitor Don Kahn, to answer questions that councilors may have. Councilors who've seen the agenda know also that this matter will be discussed in finance to discuss the actual appropriation, if it's approved and legal. But I just want to let councilors know that probably going to give a broad overview for this one, as this is the first committee hearing. So welcome, Mayor Betancourt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening to you. Good evening, councilors. Hope everybody's doing well. I've been very, very happy, been looking forward to this moment for a long time. As Mr. O'Neill said, Don Kahn is here, our city solicitor, as well as Mike Gingras, our finance director, to answer questions. I wanted to first start, if it's okay, Mr. Chairman, that we start out with a short video that we put together to put out into the public. We could start with that video.
That'll be great, then. Just have the PAT folks try to set it up.
Hello, I'm Mayor Ted Betancourt. Like many cities and towns in Massachusetts, Peabody strives to achieve a balance between growth and progress and the quality of life of our Peabody residents. I am very happy to report that my administration has reached an agreement to acquire an additional 80 acres of open space. A proposal was made by the owner of this 80 acres, Mr. Paul DiBiase and his family, to build hundreds of units of homes on the Peabody-Salem line and the Peabody-Lynn line. This area of our city is already heavily developed, and additional housing would severely impact traffic, tax our water and sewer system, and further stretch the already limited capacity of our classrooms. Instead, most of this land will be preserved as open space in perpetuity, with an option to utilize some acreage to increase capacity at the Cedar Grove Cemetery. While development creates new homes, businesses, jobs, and revenue, it also brings traffic, congestion, strain on our city services, and depletion of our open space. Fortunately, Peabody is home to a great deal of open space and a great many recreational venues, including 31 parks, playgrounds, and athletic fields, the bike path, which is eight miles long and set to expand with two new trails in the next two years. Hoping to have a video on that real soon. The South Peabody Trail, which connects 300 acres of open space, the Meadow at Peabody, which consistently ranks among the top municipal golf courses in the area, and two municipally-owned and operated farms. So here we are at O'Connor Fields. Over here to my left is the Welch School. We're doing a big transformation to make it a year-round educational and community facility. Very excited. That project should be wrapping up later this year. And to my right here is the wooded area that is in question. You can see some houses through there. That is over in that Home Street, Sherwood, Glen Drive neighborhood. So here we are on Home Street. Just to give you some perspective, a little bit to the right on Home Street is Myers Park. To the left would be O'Connor Fields and then the Welch School. However, right on the border of Salem, Marlboro Road is just across from us, and there's large development taking place in Salem over in this location back here, which would connect to the housing that would be proposed in Peabody. This would be the location that the development would access, and entering onto Sherwood over to Glen Drive. As you can tell, very quiet, dead-end neighborhood that would be significantly disrupted, all this housing. It's just something I did not feel comfortable doing. So here we are at one of the true gems of our city, and one of my favorite places, the observation deck here at the Mayor Michael Bonfanti Nature and Conservation Area. As you can see, Sydney's Pond is to my left. The golf course is to my right, Peabody Meadows Golf Course. And here's a trail that starts at the golf course and then works its way over to Cedar Grove Cemetery. Cedar Grove Cemetery, then you can connect to the South Peabody Walking Trail. So I just think this is a wonderful area to enjoy, get out and walk on a beautiful day like today, this beautiful nature, beautiful conservation area, and these hundreds of acres of open space that we feel we want to preserve to protect our natural resources, and again, to protect the quality of life of our residents. Here we are at Peabody Meadows Golf Course. Property that we're looking at here would be back behind the right, connects to the golf course, and then moving behind me, that would connect over to Cedar Grove Cemetery, and eventually over to Spring Pond. The key parcel of the purchase would be 40 acres of land up behind Spring Pond. That's targeted for development in the back here, and we believe this is the right move for the city to purchase this property, again, for the quality of life of our South Peabody residents, and really for the whole city of Peabody. This represents the largest land acquisition by the city since Brooksbury Farm nearly 50 years ago. To finance this acquisition, I have proposed utilizing a combination of community preservation funds, state grants, and proceeds from the Recreation Enterprise Fund. I do not anticipate utilizing any funds from the city's general operating budget. I will present details of the plan to the City Council on April 27. If you'd like to share your thoughts, please reach out to my office or reach out to your Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So certainly I could speak at length about this transaction. I wanted to play the video that gave a lot of what I would speak about today, but I did want to touch on a few things, just a little bit of the history. We were presented a few months back with Mr. DiBiase, his family, Paul, his son Hugo, and his team, to look at potential development over in that 80 acres. And again, this is two parcels. There's the, what we call Zero Sherwood Avenue, which is really behind the Welch School, up behind the golf course, and then Zero Spring Pond Road, which is up behind Spring Pond. Those are the two parcels that we'd be looking at. And there was proposals for, as I mentioned in the video, hundreds of units of housing that would potentially go in that area. It's an area that all of us know well. I think many of you have been up in that area, know it well, and see the potential and the importance of preserving that area, I believe. And I know it's something that's important to those neighbors, those residents in those areas. I know it's important to Councilor McGinn. He's been a partner in this as well, and has really stepped up advocating for this purchase as well, from the very beginning. So this was something that we initiated the discussion with Mr. DiBiase and his team, and I wanted to mention, his attorney, Peter Flynn, is here. He was an asset throughout this whole negotiation, very much a gentleman, as was the other attorney, Mr. Brian McGrail, that we worked with for several months. We had a number of meetings with our city solicitor, Don Kahn, to discuss options here, to see if this is a possibility, we could purchase some, or if not, some, all of the property that would be potentially available. And we were able, after a series of meetings, to strike a deal for $7.2 million to purchase both parcels, total of just over 76 acres of land. We do have two appraisals that were completed. We sent over the summary reports in the packet. We have those, certainly full reports, those are hundreds of pages, but the appraisals came back at $7.9 million, which was very good news. Our assessment records certainly do not, and you have those, certainly do not match what the value would be, but it was great to be able to have a full appraisal done of what the potential value could be if it was fully developed, which was terrific. This is a little bit different of a transaction than a typical transaction that I've come to you in the past when we've purchased open space. Typically, I would come and ask for authorization to sign a purchase and sale agreement. That's not what we're doing here today. This is being presented as a friendly eminent domain-taking case, that we would have an agreement as to the value. We have a settlement agreement. It was presented to you in your packet. That agreement has been signed by Mr. DiBiase, so it's a set price, $7.2 million for both parcels. And I'm really excited about that. There would need to be a couple of votes that would need to be taken, and I presented the chairman and Mr. McGinn with the specific language, there's some technical language that's needed for the vote, to authorize the land acquisition, and then the award of damages. Then there would have to be a document that would be signed by all the councilors if this were to pass, that we would record at the Registry of Deeds. There's a number of reasons why this was the appropriate way to go. One of the major factors was that if we didn't, it would have been very difficult to effectuate this sale because we're held to 125% of the assessed value in terms of purchasing property. The assessed value is about $1.5 million. It would not have worked to meet the needs of that. We had to move forward with this process in order to make it work, because the value of the property is much more when it's developed than it would be as it is right now as open space. So that was kind of a little bit of an issue that we had to work through. So that is being presented. Certainly, Attorney Kahn is available to answer any questions specific to that. The project, as mentioned, I'm not... I'll get into this more when we do the finance portion of this, but it is being funded through a combination primarily of community preservation funds. We've already presented, Mr. Gingras and I went to community preservation, a couple of meetings, presented to the board. Mr. McGinn and Mr. Turco were on that, as well as Mr. Gould, all very supportive of this presentation. And we got a commitment for a five-year payment of $400,000 for five years, $2 million commitment to fund that. We are looking at, and what I rely on, Mr. Gingras, his recommendation was to do a 25-year fixed debt service, debt schedule. We're looking at about $471,000 in total per year for that specific debt service. So it would be $400,000 from community preservation, then a combination of the golf course funding and also the cemetery, because both of those entities would benefit and offer potential expansion opportunities for both of those in the future. So that would be funded, $471,000 through those three funding enterprises, and it wouldn't be coming out of the operating regular budget. As I mentioned, we do have a signed agreement by Mr. DiBiase. The settlement agreement kind of lays out the terms and facts. There is one change I didn't want to mention to you. It is on item number one, where if we are late in providing the funds for this, there would be a potential penalty. Previously, it was 6%. Through a negotiation, we moved that to 15%, which I was fine with for two reasons. One is that we believe, and Mr. Gingras can speak to that, in terms of how the funding will go, we would be able to meet by a few weeks the requirement of having a payment made in full by July 31st. And just to give you some sense of the timeline, if we were to be successful today with the vote and the signatures, we would be able to record the document next week. We have 30 days from the date of the vote of the City Council in order to do that, and then Mr. Gingras would go forward with working with our debt team and coming up with the available funds, which Mr. Gingras can speak to in terms of what he expects and what he believes is going to come out from that. The second reason is, this property was appraised at $7.9 million. We are obtaining it for $7.2 million. Mr. DiBiase worked with us, and I appreciate that, and I do want to say that the reason for the sale is not an indictment on his skills or his ability. Mr. DiBiase and his team are very talented developers. There may be opportunities in the future to work in Peabody, and so it certainly wasn't because of that. It was because of this, the... I felt the importance of conserving our natural resources, preserving our natural resources, and protecting the quality of life of our residents, as to why we think this is the right thing to do. But because of that, and understanding that there's opportunities for him, should this deal fall through, he... They needed some protection, and they wanted that 15%, which would certainly be significant for us, but I don't think that we're going to get anywhere near that. The payment would have to be made by July 31st, and I expect that we will fully meet that timeframe. And then the last thing I wanted to mention, we did have a complete title examination of this property. We hired a consultant to come in and do a title examination, and everybody came back fine. There is... Everything came back fine. There is one mortgage on the property that Mr. DiBiase has, and that would be paid at the time of settlement of this claim, or settlement of this agreement. That mortgage would be paid off, and we would have a release of that mortgage and the discharge of that mortgage filed to take away that encumbrance. But everything else came back excellent, as we expected. This is an opportunity, as mentioned. This would be the biggest land acquisition we've made since Brooksbury Farm, and we would be able to connect with land that we already own up behind the golf course, up behind Spring Pond, that would really be almost 300 acres of land that we would control and own in perpetuity. Certainly would provide opportunities for the golf course, provide opportunities for the cemetery, but of particular importance is preserving and protecting Spring Pond, one of our water sources in the city. All of you know the importance of that, and to be able to protect that and utilize that as we deem fit, that area around it, I think, is extremely important. We also believe that there's going to be grant opportunities from the state for work for this project that we think we're going to be entitled to. We're unable to apply now for those because there's certain timeframes, but we expect that we will be applying for multiple grants, and we... I believe, and Kurt Bellevance believes, that we fit the criteria, and we expect we have a very good chance of getting some grants that we could use also to offset this. So, Mr. Chairman, again, I'm happy to speak more in detail, answer any questions. Attorney Kahn is here, as well as Mr. Gingras, to help answer any questions.
Thank you, Mayor Betancourt. At this time, I'd ask any committee members if they have any comments, questions. Councilor Melville?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Mayor, I just have a couple of questions, and I'll have some comments. My first question is, if successful, and, you know, we go through this process, is there a plan in place or a process in place to connect some of these neighborhoods to the walking trails and the, you know, to be able to enjoy this area? I'm very familiar with it, which I'll make... I'll comment on, but, you know, I think there's a real opportunity to connect folks in the Welch School area, the Washington Street area, to, you know, establish trails in South Peabody, Cedar Grove. Any thoughts on that, and any plans in place for that?
No definite plans right now, but absolutely, those are things that I would like to explore and have. The state's been very supportive of walking trails and bike trails, and I know a number of people already utilize that area for walking trails. So we could definitely... That would open up potential, a whole number of opportunities for us to expand what we have now up into that, those areas. So yes, that would be very much in play. Nothing that we have anything specific to share right now, but those would be definitely things that we'd be looking to do.
Thank you, and I would really encourage that. As for the Cedar Grove and the golf course, I know Cedar Grove, we would see fees just based off of plots and whatnot. Any idea of, like, the amount of the space that would be used to expand Cedar Grove? Do we have an idea, or... Because I know there's some ledge and some hills, and it could be some work to do, but we are running out of space. I think there's only, like, one section left that folks could either reserve or... I think there's only, like, one section left that folks could either reserve or go to. Any idea of the size that would be taken on?
No, I can't give specific acreage or anything as to where. There would be potential opportunities, I think, but there would have to be studies done in terms of ledge and other things that could be a detriment or could be, could impact and hamper our ability to do the expansion. I am bringing forward, I think it's going to be received tonight and marked up for a hearing, the capital request, and one of the capital requests is some money for the expansion, for another expansion at the Cedar Grove Cemetery, because we are, we are kind of getting to the point where we probably only have a few more years if we don't do this further expansion. Cemeteries, they are profitable for the city, and we will look at opportunities, you know, for potential expansion in the future. We're also looking at what I call columbariums, which are facilities that, you know, house urns and other things like that, which are, which are becoming very popular. So I think we would be bringing some proposals forwards on that as well. But the Cedar Grove Cemetery is a tremendous location for the city. Taylor McCallum and his team do an amazing job over there, and I think we will have opportunities in the future for expansion. I just can't specify where yet.
Thank you, and just a couple of comments. I support this. You know, I'm very, very familiar with this area, very familiar with the land that's being purchased. I walk it pretty regularly. You know, I think, just from a recreational perspective, there are a lot of folks that really benefit from having this open space available to them, just from the fact that you come off of Washington, to take the walking trail now, you basically have to come from the golf course entrance if you're coming from the, you know, Washington Street area, or you've got to come through Cedar Grove or along one of the streets of Lynn Street. So it's somewhat limited to neighborhoods that can't access some of that open space, which is why I would love to see being able to utilize. There are a couple of places you can kind of get into, either the golf course on the seventh hole or into the, some of the wooded area that we're discussing tonight. But I think it's really important for folks to have that opportunity. It really increases the quality of life, I can speak to that, between myself and my neighbors who do utilize it, especially the golf course walking in the off-season. And I just think it's really important to have that. Secondarily, just from a practical standpoint, I was very concerned about the development when I first got on the council. And the reason is, you know, this ledge, it's higher elevation, but more than that, you know, Strongwater Brook starts right at the behind the softball field, behind the Welch School, and it's a trickle. But when you get down to, like, Aborn Street and Clement Ave, it's not a trickle, it's really moving. And, you know, if you go to, and I walked it yesterday, just to double check, to see, and right now, the water level is low, but you get a pretty good storm. And there's only about five feet from where the water level is now, which is a relatively dry period, to peaking. And we've all gotten the calls about flooding along that area, and I really, it was concerned about the runoff that would come from this development if that occurred there downstream, which is basically parallel with Washington Street all the way to Salem. So I think that, you know, this purchase, as much as it is for open space, I think it also is a flood mitigation. We could have seen, we did, the city did invest in 2013 in a lot of work in that area, whether it be the Welch School area or in the golf course area to maintain some of that flooding. Councilor McGinn and I have, a couple of times during PBD Pride cleanup, actually cleaned out those, and so there, it's very important that those be maintained. But a lot of that work would have gone for naught if it was to suddenly have, you know, 40 houses that were now at a higher elevation than the actual water, the water, where the water actually begins. So I think this is really important for those reasons, and I would support it. And I thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity to speak on this.
Thank you, Council Melville, for your comments and questions. Any other committee members? Councilor Turco?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mayor, as you know, as I've said to you both on and off the record, this is an incredible thing for the city. I'm very happy to see it. I think in a state where we're pushing housing, 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 it was very bold of you to take this move on behalf of the city, so for that, I thank you. I have just one question regarding the, oh, and also, you know, I wanted to say the process by all your department heads that you just explained was very well done, and thank you for the explanation of why the eminent domain, as opposed to the purchase. But my one question is, it seems that the vast majority of the funding is going to come from the community, from community preservation, which would require us to put the deed restriction on the land. Where there's the intent to possibly use some of the land for the golf course and the cemetery, have we carved out a portion of that land, abutting the golf course and the cemetery? And if not, maybe we, could we create a map which, which portion of that land will not be put under the deed restriction required by CPA? And I always say that so there's no confusion in the future, because I believe Essex County Greenbelt will put the deed restriction on for the entire parcel if we don't dictate which portion we're going to possibly use in the future. So that would be my only question or concern on the subject.
Thank you, and thank you for the kind words, Councilor Turco. Good questions. So yes, I mean, I was getting probably a little ahead of myself saying that we'll be filing next week. We have 30 days because there has to be questions like that worked. There will be a restriction, deed restriction put on there. It is passive recreation if we were to expand the cemetery or expand the golf course. Those would be passive recreation uses, you know, rather than some sort of construction. But Attorney Khan, maybe you want to add a little bit to that?
Yeah, the question is whether there will be or will be in the future a restriction on any portion of the property?
I understand that the parcel requires a deed restriction for passive recreation. I think the mayor just answered my question. I was unaware that golf would be considered passive recreation, so I think...
Yeah, the way I drafted the taking, the purposes under which we're taking it are for open space or passive recreation, so that would be a limiting factor in terms of what could be done on the property.
Thank you, that answers my question.
Sure, thank you. Thank you, Councilor Turco. Any other committee members? Councilman McGinn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am not going to spend a lot of time repeating what was already said, but just suffice to say, I believe this is an important, and as the mayor said, historic acquisition, particularly given the proximity to other city-owned property, as you saw in the video and as you heard in the mayor's comments. So I, as the mayor mentioned, I've been supportive of this from day one, and I am very appreciative to the mayor for getting us to this point. As Councilor Turco said, I think the mayor and his staff have done an excellent job navigating a course through all this. Suffice to say, I'm in full support, Mr. Chairman, and I'm prepared to make the necessary motions at the appropriate time. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman McGinn. At this time, I'll open it up, Councilor Gould?
Thank you, I'll be very brief. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Mayor, congratulations. This is another step in making a legacy for what we're doing with open space in PBD, so thank you for doing that.
Thank you, Councilor Gould. Any other council members? Councilman Matty Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And just to echo what Councilor Turco has alluded to, Mayor, this is a bold move, and I think you're probably going to get your hits, given the current climate, political climate. But I think it's important that everybody knows that you have the council's full support, unanimous support on this as you take your hits, you know. We've got your back on this one. Thank you.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Councilman Matty Martin. Any other councils at this time?
I won't go on, Mr. Mayor, but I do want to thank you for this and thank everyone that's done this. This is, this part is the easy part as a counselor, looking at this. It's not easy because it's a lot of money. As you noted, it's the second largest purchase in the last, you know, 40 to 50 years, but there's a lot of work that went behind it, and it makes all the much sense. And I just wanted to echo, one of the things you went through in your outline and did a great job explaining why this particular deal is different, but it's important just to make sure we highlight for anyone watching or listening that the release and settlement agreement for this friendly, you know, eminent domain has already been signed by the DiBiase family, so there's no, down the road, once this has been, if it's approved tonight and executed, it's all said and done. There's no coming back, and no one can say this. So that's important, I think, and you outlined that, but I just wanted to make sure that was clear to everyone watching this evening. So if there's no any other questions or comments at this time, I'd ask Councilor McGinn if you'd like to move forward with the motions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that it be ordered that the city council of the city of PBD hereby, that the city council of the city of PBD on behalf of the city and by virtue of and in accordance with the authority of the provisions of Chapter 79 of the Massachusetts General Laws, as amended by the City Code and the City of PBD, Massachusetts, Part 1, Charter, Section 35, condemnation of land for municipal purpose and of any and every other power and authority which is hereunto in any way enabling adopts an order of taking to acquire for preservation of open space and to facilitate passive recreation, together with the attendant customary purposes and uses for all appendages related thereto take fee ownership interest in a, in parcels of land known as Number Zero Sherwood Avenue and Zero Spring Pond Road, PBD, Essex County, Massachusetts, the property, and more particularly described in a deed dated July 7, 2000, from Hugo DiBiase and Paul DiBiase, trustees of the Osborne Hills Realty Trust, recorded with the Essex South Registry of Deeds at Book 16455, page 108, as affected by a confirmatory deed, recorded in Book 17338, page 313, and as affected by a confirmatory deed, recorded Book 4411474, page 120, and by a deed registered with Essex County South District Registry of Deeds, District of Land Court, as Document 641883, certificate of title number 96312, and to accomplish the foregoing, execute the order of taking presented to us this day by council and further award $7,200,000 pursuant to the release and settlement agreement as damages for such taking to the land affected by such taking. In the city council, April 27, 2023, so moved.
Councilors, you've heard the motion by Councilor McGinn. Are there any comments? Hearing on roll call, vote please.
Councilor Turco?
Yes.
Peach?
Yes.
Melville?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
O'Neal?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Councilor McGinn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Move that it be ordered that the city council of the city of PBD hereby take such action as is hereby necessary to acquire by eminent domain the fee in a parcels of land known as Number Zero Sherwood Avenue and Zero Spring Pond, PBD, Essex County, Massachusetts, the property, and more particularly described in a deed dated July 7, 2000, from Hugo DiBiase and Paul DiBiase, trustee of the Osborne Hills Realty Trust, recorded with the Essex South Registry of Deeds, recorded with the Essex South Registry of Deeds at Book 16455, page 108, as affected by a confirmatory deed, ordered in Book 17338, page 313, as it affected as, as affected by a confirmatory deed, recorded book, page, I'm sorry, recorded book 4411474, page 120, and by deed registered with the Essex County South District Registry of Deeds, District of Land Court, Document 4641883, certificate of title number 96312, and to accomplish the foregoing, execute the order of taking presented to us by this day by council and further award $7,200,000 pursuant to the release and settlement agreement as damages for such taking to the land affected by such taking. In the city council, April 27, 2023, so moved.
Councilors, you've heard the motion from Councilor McGinn. Are there any questions, comments? Hearing on roll call, vote please.
Councilor Turco?
Yes.
Peach?
Yes.
Melville?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
O'Neal?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you, councilors. I'll now entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, Councilor McGinn?
Do you want to make a comment relative to the order of taking signatures that'll be required later?
Yeah, thank you, Councilor McGinn. As the mayor mentioned briefly, that, you know, assuming this goes, we'll be discussing this matter in Finance Committee, and assuming that it is reported out favorable, we're there and comes before the council, and that is approved, all councilors in attendance will need to sign this document this evening. So make sure before you leave that we'll have, make sure you sign it and execute it. But I just want to make sure that everyone takes care of that. Obviously, the timing is critical that we get this processed. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You summed it up well. There are two documents, two of the same, that I would need to be signed because primarily the land is in recorded land in one department, but there is a sliver that is also in registered land that has to be filed in a different department. So it's the same document, but I would need two signatures so that we can file in each department. So that'd be terrific when we get to the final vote. And I wanted to thank all of you. Thank you for the kind words and the support. I think this is historic moment for all of us to share in, that's something I think that's going to benefit the community and benefit our residents for generations to come. I did want to do a special thank you to Attorney Khan. This was tricky. He had to navigate his way through a number of issues, a number of different boards and commissions and legal issues. So I wanted to thank Attorney Khan for his work, as well as Mr. Jingeris and also Kurt Bellevance, who I didn't mention earlier, as Community Development Director. He was a part of this process as well, so, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilor, for reminding me on that.
Move to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
For the motion, all in favor and opposed, it's a vote we now adjourn. Thank you.
I'd like to call to order this meeting of the PBD City Council Finance Committee. Present for the committee are Councillors Gamache, Gould, Manning-Martin, Turco, and myself as chair. Also, all other councillors are present. We have several items on the agenda tonight. First item, bond order in an amount of $7.2 million for land acquisition of property at zero Spring Pond Road and zero Sherwood Ave. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chairman, good evening to you. Good evening, Councillors. Hope everybody's doing well. Certainly, I can get into much detail on this. I won't. Certainly available to answer any questions, but we're here for the next stage in the approval of the land acquisition. This is for the bond, $7.2 million for the two parcels. I did want to mention, Mr. Chairman, sorry, I meant to mention in my, I wanted to mention my early comments, but I also, I got some good news today. You recall a few months ago, we approved, you authorized me to sign a purchase and sale agreement for the purchase of, I think it's about 6.9 acres of land up behind Brown's Pond, kind of near mountain terrace. There were some title defects, so it's taken us a while to get to the point, but we closed this morning and that deal is complete. We own 6.9 acres of developable land up behind Brown's Pond. So that deal went through today as well. So that was good news. But as to this, I'm certainly available and happy to answer any questions, but I think you've heard the presentation and understand how it's going to be financed and what the plan is going forward. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So just for clarity, we've kind of covered this in detail in the Legal Affairs Committee. I would certainly entertain any additional questions from committee members or other councillors at this time. Seeing none, we are here being asked to approve a bond order to finance the purchase that was of land that was reviewed in Legal Affairs. And Councillor Turco, if you'd help us with a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now, you're prepared to make that motion just briefly. I did not mention at the Legal Affairs Meeting, Committee Meeting, my thanks to you personally for all your work in this, and I know you were a big proponent for this land purchase from day one. So thank you very much for spearheading this along with the mayor. With that, be it ordered that $7.2 million, $7,200,000 is appropriated for land acquisition of the property located at zero Spring Pond Road and zero Sherwood Avenue, consisting of 38 acres and 38.282 acres, more or less, and more particularly described as assessors map 116 lot 255 and map 110 lot 002X, including the payment of any cost incidental or related thereto. And that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the mayor is authorized to borrow said amount under Chapter 44 of the General Laws or any other enabling authority, that the treasurer, mayor, and other city official is authorized to take actions necessary or convenient to carry out the purposes of this order and that this order be adopted as advertised and read. So moved.
Councillors, you heard the motion from Councillor Turco on the motion. Seeing none, roll call.
Councillors Turco.
Yes.
Manning-Martin.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Gamache.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you, Council.
Moving on, next item on the agenda, Item B is a council motion, P 134-23, by Councilor Manning-Martin, co-motion with Councilor Gould, move to request that a presentation and update from James Freeman, Pension Administrator, Mike Gingras, Director of Finance, on the cost of living adjustments, COLA base for retirees and refer to Finance Committee. Mr. Gingras.
Thank you. Briefly, Mr. Freeman is here, but the Retirement Board met, we had the option this year to move the cost of living increase up to 5%. But upon discussion at the Retirement Board in, at the time, we had lost approximately $27 million in investments because of the market declines, the board didn't go to the 5%, decided to maintain the 3% COLA, similar to what the state has done at the Teachers Retirement. Mr. Freeman's here and he can explain it in much further detail.
Thank you. So I don't want to take too much of your time. I prepared, I thought, a pretty comprehensive study for you all to read, and I don't want to go over an awful lot of graphs and numbers with you. Thought it was pretty self-explanatory, but I'm here to answer any questions you have. Primarily, I think the question was on the impact.
Mr. Freeman, I think a couple of people are having trouble hearing you, so if he could just speak a little more directly into the microphone, that would...
So...
Thank you.
So I think initially, they were looking for a study on the base, and then it was redirected more on the impact if the 5% was approved retroactive back to July, what would the impact be to the retirement system?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just for background, Counselor Gould and I were contacted, and perhaps some other councillors were, but we were contacted by members of the retirement community questioning why PBD had not voted to increase the COLA base maximum, as many other communities have opted to support. I guess it was a new law or a change, having to go back to COVID-related. That was something that I was not familiar with, as it doesn't come to the City Council. So we asked, we thought it'd be a good idea to have the Pension Administrator, Mr. Freeman, and Mike Gingrich, Director of Finance, come up and explain why other communities chose to support this and increase the COLA base maximum for their retirees, and PBD chose not to. And I'm sure there'll be plenty of questions, and I know there are a couple of gentlemen here that wish to speak on the matter. But I guess the $27 million that we lost in investments due to the market, I mean, the market affected every city and town. So I'm just wondering why some communities would opt to increase their COLA benefits for their seniors on fixed income, and PBD did not, when everyone is affected by the market. That's just one question. I'm sure there'll be a lot of questions as you present further, but I just wanted to give people the background of why we're having this discussion, because it isn't something that is decided by the City Council, but there are discussions that are done by a board that votes, but it's not in a public forum like this. So I thought it would be a good opportunity for everyone to be educated and be brought up to speed of our pension status and fund moving forward. So that's why, that's why everyone's here this evening. And I thank you for coming forward, Mr. Freeman, and give us that presentation, and Mr. Gingrich as well. So thank you.
Do you want to respond to that, Mr. Freeman?
Sure. So I can't speak for other cities and towns. What I did prepare for you as of, I think, March the 14th, was the 59 cities and towns, no, the 59 retirement boards that made the recommendation versus the 30-something that had approved it. And that's, you'll find that in that graph. We also list, what I put together was what their COLA base is. We increased, well, actually, you increased the COLA base to 15,000 three years ago. But I also list where we're at with our funded liability as well as all those other cities and towns, and you'll see, the average are funded at 65%. We're under 50%. You have a long way to go to fund the pension system. Each year, it increases. One of the things I did the other day, I didn't put together for you, but what the board considers when we look at losses, what's coming in, between January 1 of 2021 and now, we've had 88 retirees or survivors pass away. And that took 1.6 million out of retirement. In that same time, you've had 106 employees retire that added 3.8 million to it. So when you look at the actuary and you think you're at 54%, you're probably closer to 50% funded. That you just don't have the money in the pension system that you think is there. It's a moving target all the time. So the board took a look at, we had a loss of almost 13% of our investments last year, the rising costs of retirements, and taking on, so, which I put in the report, we were at about 300,000. To increase the COLA at a 5%, now it puts you back another half of a million dollars. It's recurbing. So when we do 3% next year, it's compounded. It's a reverse mortgage, so to speak. I can't speak for what was in their mind. I'm not a voting member of the board. I do the studies, I give them the numbers, I tell them what it's going to cost. I can tell you, it wasn't an easy decision. It was not a unanimous decision. It went to the board on two different occasions, but they decided, again, not unanimous, not to pass on that additional unfunded liability to the taxpayer. That's where it's going to end up.
Counselor Manning-Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And again, I know you can't answer for cities and towns, but the question remains, others are at 65%, and we're below 50%. Why are we in this situation? Are we, are we creating too many jobs, more than other, creating new jobs and putting them into the pension system, and other cities and towns aren't? Are we giving automatic pay increases to a degree with retroactive pay, and other cities and towns are not? Why are we so low, down to 50%, when other cities and towns are in a position to vote for this maximum increase for the COLA affecting people that may make, have a $17,000 or $20,000 pension? Widows of laborers could really benefit from that small amount. A lot of people retire from the City of PBD with a huge pension. That's not who we're really trying to help here. We're trying to help people who that small benefit really helps. So, you know, and it's interesting, just on our agenda this evening for finance, we just spent $8 million, and we gave accolades for the expenditure. The taxpayers are the ones that pay for that. People that worked in this city for years have been paying taxes for benefits like this for years. We're so quick to say yes to salary increases, retroactive pay, but it was so easy to say no for a small increase for people who don't make that type of money and need that type of money. I'm not, we're not talking about people who retired with 80,000, 90,000, $100,000 pensions. I'm not who I'm concerned about at all. And I'm not casting any negativity. I'm not trying to through the folks that made the decision. A lot of people, I make votes, people don't like them. I'm always trying to do what I think is right. I just can't see how this vote was taken without further thought, further discussion, and really thinking about the people that it affected and the people that it could have helped. So I do appreciate you coming. I know that you're not a board member, and I don't begrudge the board members. But when you do take these positions, just as we all do here, and I have for many years, you take a position on a board and you take a vote, and you have to, you're accountable for it. So I wanted to talk about that vote. It was taken, and I wanted to know why, because it affected people that really, really, really count on us, and they've been footing the bill for years. So those are my remarks, and I appreciate you coming. I'm sure my colleagues have some concerns. And again, I know there's a gentleman here that would like to speak if the chair would allow it.
Thank you, Counselor Manning-Martin. I will definitely allow it. I am going to defer to committee members first. Counselor Turco.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I had similar questions to Counselor Manning-Martin, and I wonder, Jim, if you could give us a microscopic view of how did we, I mean, how did we get to 50% or less than 50% funded? I mean, it seems we're in the bottom 10% of all retirement boards in the state. So how does that happen?
You make the minimum payment every year. It's like when you get your credit card statement on a $1,000 bill, and it says, your minimum payment is $41, and you write a check for $41, and you keep charging. So many cities and towns say, okay, we have to pay 15 million. Can we find 17 and a half and pay this down faster? PBD doesn't do that. I can't speak historically. I've only been here seven and a half years.
Thank you. That explains it a bit. So regarding, Counselor Manning-Martin, it just addressed the COLA base adjustment, and I think we might be talking about two different things, but the COLA base in PBD is 15,000, correct? And this was a vote to increase the cost of living allowance for the year up to 5%, which the board approved 3%. Now, with the COLA base, I believe there's a bill in the legislature now to be voted on shortly, that the COLA base is going to be raised to 16,000, if I'm not mistaken. And I know that's true of mass teachers and mass retirees, so I'm not sure that cities and towns would be subject to that, but I believe if the state does raise the COLA base to 16,000, that likely would follow suit with other retirement boards. So there is a light at the end of the tunnel, where at least the COLA base minimum is, will be 16,000 across the board, I believe, if this bill passes. As far as the 3% raise, I agree with Counselor Manning-Martin, some of these people have retired decades ago. It would be nice to be able to give them the full complement of the 5% raise, but also there are those people that had retired at 80 to $100,000 that need to be taken into consideration. And I believe it was maybe a year or two ago that we did significantly increase the COLA base. So hopefully that helped some of the retirees, and hopefully the bill and the legislature passes and additionally helps. That's really all I could say about it. Thank you. Thank you.
So, I'm sorry, just to answer back, that piece of legislation applies to that system. So in order for PBD to go to 16,000, the board would have to make that recommendation, local option, city council has to approve it, as you did back in July, well, we ran it in January, but I think you made it effective in July of 2020 is when we went to the 15,000 COLA base. And there is no, no one from the board has recommended that it be increased above 15,000.
Okay, that was my next question, Jim. So there's been no discussion from the board to, to piggyback on that legislation from PBD? Okay, thank you.
No, and I would add, and I understand no one is here to bash the board or disparage the board, but I will say, if you look at the report I prepared for you, PBD has given the maximum allowable COLA every year except for two, going back to 1998. When Perick says, well, three years in a row, two years in a row, 0% COLA, PBD gave a 3% COLA. So, and I gave you an example of an actual retiree that was at the COLA base then. If we, if PBD only gave that retiree the minimum COLA base allowed, well, what Perick recommended, they would have had a total of $5,877 in COLA raises. That same person in PBD getting the 3% every year is at 9,049. So retirees are far ahead of what Perick recommends every year when they come out with the COLA. They've just always, other than two years when there was a significant hit in the investments, one year they gave two and a quarter and one year, I think it was 1.4 and then 1.6. So they did actually give them the three, but it was split in two years decades ago.
Thank you. My last comment on the subject, Mr. Chairman, is just that, you know, I've seen personally, and not in this state, but throughout the United States, hundreds of retirement systems go defunct. And, you know, I think that it's the fiduciary responsibility of that board to make sure that there's a longevity in that retirement system. And right now, it's, it's really not there. So I understand the quandary that they're, they're in and as Counsel Maning-Martin said, likely a very, very difficult vote. I think we all want to hand out 5% to all our retirees as often as possible, but I think the long-term goal is to make sure that system is there for everybody, you know, in perpetuity. So I think that's the priority and that's what it needs to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Turco. Counsel Gould.
Mr. Chairman, through you to Mr. Freeman. Jim, can you please explain what the COLA base means for those of us that aren't in the realm of discussion on that? What it means, please?
Yes, sir. So unlike social security and other pensions where, you know, I'm sure everybody's parents, grandparents were on social security, when they got their little 3.2% raise, that was on their entire retirement. In Massachusetts, when they set up a base, it, it does not give a raise beyond the first 15,000. So someone who's getting a $70,000 a year pension is getting the 3%, whatever percentage the board approves on the first 15,000. So someone who's making $18,000 a year on a pension is getting the exact same raise as someone who's far over that. So the raise is only given on the first $15,000 of retirement allowance. Personally, and I'll just, you know, people know me, I'll give my opinion anytime, whether you ask for it or not, but I felt that the COLA should go back to way it started when they first came out, to give a COLA raise to the people that are at the 9,000, 10,000, 12,000. Now granted, some of those people are retired electric officials, two, 10 years, they dive, they come back and get a $6,000 a year pension and a, you know, a medical plan for life.
Could you repeat that, please? You gave an example. Could you repeat that?
So when COLA first was approved in Massachusetts, it was only allowed for people with a pension under a threshold. So I think it was 6,000 or 7,000. Only those pensioners got a COLA raise. Someone who was at a $20,000 a year pension got nothing. When, when they first came out, the history of COLA, this is long before Prop 2 and 1/2. That's, to me, that's how it should, I mean, if the answer is to fix those people that aren't earning enough in these hard times, it's got to be the state legislature that goes back and says, yeah, we, we did it one time, 5%, but let's really look at people that have a 15-year history, they, they were a housekeeper at the hospital for $2.09 an hour and they're struggling to pay their electric bill. I agree, that's who we really need to give the COLA raise on. But when it's a $15,000 base across the board, it's every retiree in the system, and I think I gave you that number, how many are receiving it and how many aren't. We have 200 and, well over 200 people that are below the 15,000 COLA base. So they would not get the maximum amount.
Can you, I could dig into the handout you gave us, but could you tell me, please, how many retirees there are?
As of today, retirees and survivors of retirees, we're, we're in the 800 neighborhood.
What's the average that, of the 800, what's the average monthly pension? I know it's, there's quite a range depending on what jobs, but...
Well, I can tell, well, I, I don't have the average salary. I can tell you the average salary of the 106 new retirees is over 3,000. The 88 people...
Can you speak into the microphone better, please? I'm sorry.
The one, the one statistic that I did run the number is, of the 88 survivors and retirees that passed away, the average monthly pension was in the 1,500 neighborhood. Of the 106 retirees we've had in the last two years, it's over 3,000. So we, our pension payment out in 2022 was 23,075,000. That's what's going out the door. PBD's putting in about 15 million. And that, that counts for the Light Plant and the Housing Authority as well because they contribute. Employees put in another 5 million and you see, it's easy math. I took money of our investments so we could meet payroll between February and July when we get appropriations. So we are actually drawing into our investment money to meet payroll every year.
We, we drew into our investment to make payroll. Mr. Chairman, could I ask Mr. Gingras to come up to the podium, please?
Yes, Mr. Gingras.
Mike, can you please expound on that, please? On what Mr. Freeman just said about taking our investments and making payroll? Is that, is that what, the way we've been operating for years?
Yeah, I think for a number of years. And as the payouts for retirees has grown, now we're at $2 million a month, $24 million a year, with the city contributing approximately half of that. And then the retirees, 5 million, there's a gap that traditionally, the investments themselves have grown during the course of the year to far exceed that. We've had years where the investments have been 19, 20 million. So that the, the earnings would cover that difference. Now, in a bad time or bad, bad years like last year, we're, we're drying down, plus we're having losses in the investments.
Do we have a plan in place or is there talk about closing that gap and overfunding to try to close that gap? Are we, is there any discussion amongst your team?
I'm anticipating in the next actuarial, with the increases in pension costs and the reductions in investments, that the, when the actuarial is done, then we will receive a new funding schedule and have a few options in those funding schedule. And over the next number of years, instead of the city contributing 15 million, it's going to move to 18, 20, 23, it's going to keep escalating.
Mr. Chairman, I know there's other counselors that want to speak and as Counsel Maning-Martin stated, there are two, there is one gentleman at least, Mr. Jones, if, now might be as appropriate at any time because we're talking about, you know, what people earn and what their salaries and pension is, but I don't want to have you dictate, I don't want to dictate to you who should speak, but it might be a good, good point to bring in Mr. Jones now.
Yeah, thank you, Counsel Gould. I'm going to stick with comments from the council first. Counsel Melville?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just as a point of information, I mean, this is the largest expenditure every year in our budget. I, something I always bring up just as, it's, it's going to continue to grow. And on top of that, you know, there is an actuary table that shows the contributions that we're going to be making over the next, I think, 20 years, I think it's 2035, Mike. And I think that's the correct number when I looked into it. And I believe that was based off of a statutory change in 2011 that requires cities and towns to make those contributions. But I remember, I want to say two years ago, we were at like 57% at that time and then just fluctuations in the market along with contributions and then drawing down. I, retirement reform is going to be something we have to look at because the, the difference between somebody retiring 30, I think Counsel Maning-Martin pointed out, a police officer, a fireman retiring 25 years ago versus what they're going to be retiring at and living on today, especially that the cost of living increases don't actually reflect the cost of living increases that are actually happening in, in, in real life. So I understand that it's an issue. I think it's something that we really have to pay attention to because the other unfunded liability we should talk about at some point is healthcare, because that's, that's the real one that's out there and that we should also be, be very cognizant of that. So I think this is a great conversation. I'm glad this came up and I look forward to hearing what some of the retirees have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Melville. Counsel Turco?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the second opportunity to speak. I just wanted to address Counsel Gould's question because I do have the amortization table. Just for an example, Counselor, this year, the city of PBD is due to pay 15.3 million into the system by state mandate and we're mandated to, to get to fully fund it by 2036 because I believe we asked for a one-year extension on the amount. So this year, 15.3 million, in the final year of the payment to get fully funded in 2036, the city will be at 25.1 million. So it's a significant increase over the next 10 years. It's, it's actually a very daunting number to look at. So thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Thank you, Counsel Turco.
Thank you, Counsel Turco, Counsel Gould. Any other counselors? I'd like to ask the gentleman, the retired gentleman that are here if they'd like to If you could just state your name and address for the record and if you, just push the red button on the microphone.
Salem, but I am a retired PBD police officer. I just... I just want to say a few words, very few since the Celtics are on pretty soon, so I'll try to keep it down. I just want to, I'm not here to argue with anybody because...
Ken, excuse me, can you speak into that mic? Can you put that mic there?
All right, guess I'm new at this. So I'm not opposed to what Mr. Freeman was saying. I can't, I couldn't hear a lot of it, but I know the story about they've lost money in 2022. I happen to have all of the, I'm going off my, off my, but I happen to have all of the percents that the board has made. And a 10-year average between 2012 and 2021, they made 11%. In 2021, they made over 20%. And in 2022, which they're all talking about because everybody lost money during the pandemic. So we understand that, all right? The target percent that they look for in retirement boards is 7.34%. So you can see, the retirement board has made much more than the target. And I got all these from Boston, from the, the team in Boston that does the legislation for retirees. So I have all those figures here. Now, I was using 14,000 as a base. Ann said it's 15. I don't know when it went up to 15, but it, so my figures will be a little off. But I just wanted to explain what I, what I've done. When I talked to, first of all, in November, when the legislature put this special 5% in, this is a one-time, 2023 fiscal year, 5%. It's the extra 2% and the legislature in their goodness wanted to help out the retirees. And now granted, it's an extra, it's only $300, okay? Now you may say, big deal, but a person that's been retired, that works for maybe the DPW or something like that, they're not making a lot of money. So $300, you could probably go to Starbucks and get at least two or three coffees with that. So it's a, you know, it's, it's an amount of money. So that's, when I called Mr. Freeman and I'll say it's January, and I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we were being taken care of, they had passed it and all that. And he told me, oh, no, we rejected that. And I said, you what? He said, oh, we rejected that. I said, why? He said, well, it's going to cost the city $200,000 or something like that. And I said, well, your budget is, our budget is $174 million. So even if that was true, it's a, it's a minuscule amount, but it's not true. Because when I called Boston, I'll, I'll quote you the CEO in Boston, who's been there for years and does all the legislation. There is no upfront cost to the city of PBD. The money comes from, when I was working for the 32 years I worked, the money came from money that I put in, it's coming from the money that the people are working now and it's for the investments that the board made. And I, I just quoted you the percents that the board is making. And again, I couldn't hear Jim exactly, but I, these are the figures that I have, okay? So after I get done talking with him, I called Boston and they gave me the, the information that I just gave you about the, about the interest rates and, and where the money comes from. It doesn't have anything to do with our budget, PBD's budget. So in the meantime, I called the, excuse me, in the meantime, I called someone on the retirement board, a retirement board, it's called the PBD Retirement Board, works for us, retirees, okay? So the person I spoke to, I said, could you tell me what the vote was? And then I found out it was in December. Now remember, it was passed in November, all of a sudden in December now, we've, we've had this deal and he made the, told me the vote was four to one against the retirees. So I, so I said, gee, that's unusual. And when I, when I spoke to him in Boston, he said, are you trying to tell me that the PBD rejected it? He was incredulous. I said, yeah, they, they rejected it. He said, I've never heard of such a thing. Any, there's all, I'll give you some more information on that, but all the cities and towns, he said, I've been here for years, I've never heard of them rejecting something like this, a one-time deal, a one-time deal, and it's $300. So anyway, I, I let it sit for a while, stewed by myself, and then I called Counsel Maning and Counsel Gould and got their philosophy on it, et cetera, and they said they'd look into it. So here we are tonight. So I'm going to give you some information regarding municipalities. There's 102 retirement boards in the, in the state of Massachusetts, 102 retirement boards, okay? So far, now we have up until June 30th to approve this and it has to be approved first by the retirement board, that didn't happen, and I hope, hope we're going to reconsider that, and second by the council. Governor Baker brought the second part in, but it's part of the bill. So that's what we have to do. So I've got some information, like I told you, right now, there's 68, almost 70 people at municipalities, retirement boards that have approved it, 70 out of 102, okay? Now, I'm just going to give you, I'm going to give you some, some facts. First of all, all state employees, all state employees and all teachers have already gotten the 5%, okay? That's number one. I'm going to give you some cities... I'm going to give you some cities and towns, and, and I'll tell you why I'm giving you these. I'll tell you in advance. These are what I call blue collar, lower-income cities, okay? Boston, right off the bat, okay? Chicopee, low income. Fall River, low income. Fitchburg, low income. Lawrence, ready? I call these the big three, okay? Lawrence, Lowell, and Lynn, all approved it. Lawrence, Lowell, and Lynn, not Peabody, those three Ls. And if we're not, I don't know how to say it because I don't want to embarrass anybody, but if we're not per capita higher than any of those towns, I'll pay you the difference, okay? So those are the big three. Methuen, low income. Pittsfield, low income. Let's see, Somerville, low income. Springfield, definitely low income. Taunton, low income. Worcester, low income, okay? Those are, those are the towns that have approved it. Their, their board didn't pick and choose or whatever, like I said, I couldn't hear Jim very well. But they've, they've approved it. And if they can afford it, I certainly think Peabody can. But let me just give you a couple more. These are not the low income. We've got Beverly. We've got every single Bristol County, Franklin County, Hampshire County, Middlesex County, Norfolk, and Worcester, all of those people have approved it. Gloucester, one of our neighbors. Marblehead, one of our neighbors. Medford Melrose. Newburyport. Revere, that's sort of like a low income. Salem, Salem, I live in Salem. Gee, I can afford it, I hope you guys can. Saguas. Wakefield, Woburn, and there's many others, but a lot of them, they're just, you know, they're not near us. But there's 68, almost 70 of them, that have already approved it. And I just can't believe that you guys, not you guys, but you have to vote after, after Jim changes the vote. So I've done this for the little guy, okay? One of the councillors was talking about police officers and, and stuff. This is the little guy that doesn't make a big pension, and 300 bucks would probably mean quite a bit to him. And I just hope that, you know, maybe your folks could reconsider and, you know, put it through.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. There's another gentleman here, did you want to speak as well, sir? No. Consular Manning Martin?
Thank you. And briefly, I just want to thank Mr. Jones for all the work that he has done. He's certainly given us quite an education. I know that took a lot of time, and he's just looking out for the little guy, and I appreciate him contacting me. And again, I appreciate everything that he's shared this evening. He had mentioned that he's not a public speaker, and he was a little nervous, but he certainly was very effective in his presentation. So I thank you, Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Consular Manning Martin. Any other councillors? Consul Gould?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Could I ask Mr. Freeman a question, please?
Mr. Freeman?
Mr. Freeman, if there were a positive vote that came out of the retirement board, what would be the next action? Would it come to the city council for approval? Is that the process? Or maybe Mr. Gingras knows. Is that the process, Mike? Okay.
I wasn't sure, the process, I wasn't sure what Mr. Gingras said, the process would be.
He's coming up to clarify.
Yeah, the process is if, for the 5%, if the retirement board had adopted that, then it would come to the city council for final approval.
Is this water over the dam then? Water over the dam, excuse me? There's nothing that can happen now?
There's nothing before the retirement board at this time. The vote was already taken. It could, I could suggest that the council send a memo or a letter of reconsideration to the retirement board, and we could take it up again.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Thank you, Mr. Freeman.
Consul O'Neill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be brief. I just wanted to comment, this is, I do want to thank Mr. Freeman and the retirement board for the, the packet you gave us and the material, just, you know, seeing the hard numbers. This isn't fun because, you know, it is, on its surface, seems like an easy ask, if you will, 3% to 5%. But as outlined in the, the material we've talked about tonight and in the, the presentation, and what probably what most of the board members voted for, we're, as we've talked about, the system is unfunded right now, to a level that needs to be addressed. And we do have to get that. State's going to require us to increase that significantly, but we may have to do it on our own, which could mean more dollars put into the budget, which could be higher taxes. So I look, this is a small percentage increase, but is not the position we should be taking for the long-term viability of the entire retirement system for all employees. So it may not be politically savvy to say that, but I think it's the right decision to not increase it at this time. But that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Consul O'Neill. Any other councillors? Seeing none, what is the will of the committee? Consul Gould?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would recommend that we do what Mr. Gingras said and request reconsideration on the retirement board for the increase from 3% to 5%. Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Councillors, you heard the motion from Consul Gould on the motion? Seeing none, Consul Turco?
Can we do a roll call on, on the vote?
We will do a roll call, yes.
Oh, we are, oh, thank you.
Seeing nothing else on the motion, roll call.
Councillor Turco?
No.
Manning Martin?
Yes.
Gould? Gamache?
Present.
McGinn?
No.
Motion to two, one voting present.
Next item on the agenda, transfer fund, school salaries. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, council. Superintendent Vidal was here. He had to take his daughter home, but he was here, certainly. I can try to answer any questions that you may have. But this really comes down to, when we were budgeting the school budget, they put in for 2% salary increases. When we negotiated the contract, we went above 2%, did 3% and some steps and lanes changes. So it required some additional funding, which is, which brings us here today. That's the, the long and short of it, but happy to give any further questions or answer any questions. I didn't want to ask Mr. Gingras, he can kind of give you a little breakdown of that money.
Mr. Gingras?
Thank you. So in order to fund this $1,044,000 gap, we're requesting a transfer from free cash of $600,000 and a utilization of the fund balance in school lunch revolving of $444,305. If you recall, last, at the end of last year, we came to the council to fund $850,000 from free cash to go to the school lunch revolving in order to make it whole. Well, towards the end of June, we received some additional funding from federal government for the school lunches. And at the end of the day, we really didn't need the $850,000. It was more like 250,000. We had about $500,000 extra that we've carried forward. And we're asking to utilize those monies for the schools in a little bit different fashion to fund these salaries. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gingras. Questions from the committee? Consul Turco?
Just one question, Mr. Chairman. Mike, I was going to ask Dr. Vidal this, but hopefully you can answer it. In the school budget presentation and the presentation before the council, Dr. Vidal had stated that he had some monies that he was holding on to from Esser for down the road. Can we not use Esser for, to fund this? Or can we use Esser to fund this? I guess would be the better question.
I, I think he has, Esser, Esser is earmarked to finish this year and for the next budget, and then it's going to be completed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Consul Turco. Consul Gould?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Move, ready to make a motion if.
Consular Manning Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a question through you to Mr. Gingrich. This is for a 3% cost of living adjustment, 3% COLA. Could you tell me what the average COLA adjustment is for the active workers, people currently working now, as opposed to, of course, retirees?
I cannot, but, but the sheet that was attached, the total amount of the COLA was 2.2 million.
Right, so if somebody's making $130,000, what's 3% of 130,000?
$4,000.
And what's 3% of someone making 50,000?
$1,500.
$1,500, it's a lot more than just $300, is my point. Thank you.
Thank you, Consular Manning Martin. Any other councillors? Consul Gould?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to move from unreserved fund balance free cash, account number 1000000000035901 in the amount of $600,000. And school lunch revolving account 2410000035606 in the amount of $444,305. To school salaries, account number 1000300051110110002122016 in the amount of $1,044,305. So move, Mr. Chairman.
Councillors, you hear the motion from Consul Gould on the motion? Seeing none, roll call.
Councillor Turco?
Yes.
Manning Martin?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Gamache? McGinn?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Next item on the agenda, Ordinance Amendment, Section 1821, entitled Schedule of Compensation for Full-Time Positions Not Subject to Collective Bargaining. Ordinance Amendment, Section 21-5, Recreation Manager. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to speak very briefly, then I'm going to turn over to Jen Davis, our Parks and Recreation Director. But I apologize if there was some confusion. This is not a new position. I wouldn't have brought forward a new position, considering our budget as it is now. This is a change and a slight increase in salary to try to entice the right person for that, for this position. We've had some difficulty doing that, and we're looking at some restructuring. But this is not a new position. This is just adding a little bit of salary and a little bit of additional duties and responsibilities to a position to try to entice and bring the right person in to assist Jen Davis. She's had quite a bit on her plate, and certainly we're looking for the right person to assist that department. And Ms. Davis can speak to that in more detail. But I just want to be clear, this is not a new position. This is just a slight add to a existing position.
Questions from the committee? Consular Manning Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for pointing that out and clarifying, Mayor, because that was my first question. And my next question is, is this a new title? Is it a title change? What was it before, so we can see that it's replaced in the budget?
So basically, excuse me, the position, it is a title change. It was Recreation Supervisor. We have two Recreation Supervisors. One is Recreation Supervisor, and one is Recreation Supervisor Outdoor Education. So that position will remain the same. The position that I, we want to change and upgrade is the Recreation Supervisor to be more of a division head. Out of the four, five departments that I manage, Recreation is the only one that does not have a specific division manager. I'm that person. And then I have two rec supervisors under me that I manage. What I'm looking to have that new rec manager position do is to manage the Recreation Supervisor and really be the head of Recreation, where they will be responsible for the hiring, the, for managing the full-time employee and 75-plus part-time employees. We deal with 6,000 residents annually. We have over 300 different programs that we run, and we bring in $300,000 to $600,000 annually. This past year has been a little tough. We've been without a rec supervisor for over a year. And unfortunately, our department is vast. We have a lot of really quality programs. So we need to have somebody that isn't a beginner in the recreation world. We need to have somebody that's a manager, and that's what we're trying to do.
Thank you. I, I don't have any problem with this. I just wanted to be clear. So when the budget comes forward, it's going to say Recreation Manager and a Recreation Supervisor? Is that correct?
Correct.
So, so if you could do me a favor when you present the budget, if you could just point that out to me? Because I'll be looking for it. Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Other councillors? Consul Gould?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hi, Jen, thanks for what you're doing for us.
Thank you.
Jen, just so we can figure out the job, who was the person that was under, was doing this role and now she's not? Is it Kirsten?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And she will, excuse me, that position will be the manager, and then there'll be a supervisor under her?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Jen.
Other councillors? Consul Turco?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Jen Davis. Jen, I should have looked this up, and I meant to do that today. But what was the previous salary for this, high salary for this position?
I believe it was 56 to 58 was the max.
It's roughly a $14,000 increase.
Correct.
Thank you.
Other councillors? Consul Welton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm not on this committee, so I appreciate the opportunity to ask a question. I'm just curious, through you to Ms. Davis, have you had a chance to look at similar communities and what they're paying this position? And are you confident that at $72,000, we'll be able to retract and attain the talent that we're seeking for this role?
Absolutely, that's the first thing I did. I, I'm a very big believer in Mass Rec and Park Association, which is our state organization, which I've held many different roles within their board. But they do an annual salary survey, so I used that information to figure out what the position should be. I also reached out to a lot of neighboring communities for job descriptions to make sure that we had everything that we need in Peabody for that position. But I think, I'm pretty confident that we'll get somebody for this position.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, Consul Welton. Any other councillors? Seeing none, through you to the director, through myself. Sometimes you get used to saying things a certain way. Director Davis, I, I think you may have addressed this in your clarification to Consular Manning Martin's question, but I'm, for some reason, I just want to make sure we, as we proceed on this, that the motions are right, because it does look like we're creating a new position here.
Right.
So was the question that, or was your clarification that there were two people and there will be two people, just one of them will be reclassified into this?
Correct.
This new hire will be reclassified into a new job title?
Correct.
That pays at a higher rate?
Correct.
And you need the higher amount of money to?
Entice.
Entice them to take the position?
Yes, and the job responsibilities have changed as well.
Okay, so it's?
But yes.
But again, to the, the point that Consular Manning Martin made, and what she's going to be looking for at budget time is, there's no net change in terms of the number of heads.
No.
It's just that we're changing one of the job titles essentially.
One job title is being changed and upgraded, basically, is what's happening.
Thank you. What is the will of the committee? Consul Gould?
Mr. Chairman, do we have language that you'd like me to, want me to read that paragraph?
We do. If you go to Item D, the second page and the third page, we need to do both of those.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to amend Ordinance Chapter 21, Article 1 in General by adding Section 21-5 Recreation Manager. The position Recreation Manager is hereby created and established. The duties of the, should I read the duties, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
The duties of the Recreation Manager shall be to perform a variety of recreational programming and administrative duties, including planning, implementing, facilitating, and supervi- and supervising comprehensive recreational programs for the community. In conjunction with the Director, this position shall determine the recreational needs of the community, researches and evaluates new program ideas, oversees the development, organization, implementation, and supervision of programs and special events, including sites located outside of the city, responsible for the development, marketing, scheduling, budgeting, implementation, oversight, and evaluation of recreation programs and events. Position Supervisors, full-time Recreation Supervisor/Outdoor Education Coordinator and various seasonal supervisors, staff, and part-time employees. During the summer, this position will directly supervise up to 75 employees. So move, Mr. Chairman. And you want Page 3?
You heard the motion from, we'll do that separately, Councilor Gould. You heard the motion of Councilor Gould on the motion, seeing none, roll call.
Councilor Turco. Manning-Martin.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Gamache.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Councilor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In ordinance amending Section 18-21, entitled Rates of Compensation for Full-Time Positions Not Subject to Collective Bargaining, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of PBD as follows. Section 1, the ordinance establishing a compensation and classification plan is hereby amended as follows. Code of the City of PBD is adopted on, as adopted on January 23, 1969, and amended and hereby further amended by deleting from 18-21 the ordinance establishing a compensation and classification plan for Recreation Manager effective 7/1/2022 in the amount of $72,670. So move, Mr. Chairman.
Councilors hear the motion of Councilor Gould on the motion, seeing none, roll call.
Councilor Turco. Manning-Martin.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Gamache.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Next item on the agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Davis. Next item on the agenda, transfer of fund Endicott Street Bridge in an amount of $195,000. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. I think all of you are familiar with this project. In fact, it started today with some work that's being done by National Grid. Then it's going to be followed up by some work from PMLP, and then we will be doing some internal work, rerouting some water and sewer lines in anticipation of the demolition of the Endicott Street Bridge. We received, as you may recall, two grants, one for $500,000 and one for $100,000, a total of 600. We had the estimate of 1.2 million, and as things have been, we've been learning now for a number of years, the costs are just escalating considerably, and it came in about $195,000 higher. So we're coming here today to ask to fill that gap so we can move forward with this project and then complete this work that's necessary. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Questions from the committee. Councilor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Mayor, I was impressed that we took the time to do the utility work and all the underground work. I've driven through that quagmire three or four times in the last two days, and a lot of good things happening, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. And I did want to say, I anticipate that the work will be done through the summer into the early fall. We have a completion date under contract for November 8. Very optimistic that we will achieve that and maybe even have it completed earlier. The utility companies thankfully have been working well with us, which sometimes can be difficult to get them to do the work necessary so that we can actually do the construction work that's necessary. So that's gone well. We expect that to last a couple of weeks before the actual real meat of it takes place.
I'll say, Councilor Gould.
Yeah. Make a motion when you...
I'll get back to you, Councilor Turco.
Hey, very quickly, Mr. Mayor, since this was originally proposed, since you wrote this on April 4, I'd been told that it may be wrong information that there was some additional damage or additional collapse of somebody's private property right at the bridge. Does this increase, if in fact that's the case, does that increase the cost of the project, or is it something that needs to be addressed? I believe it was a residential driveway that abutted the bridge, which is what I was told, but maybe that's misinformation or... Through you, Mr. Chairman. Maybe I can ask Council Peach if she's aware of that?
Through the chair.
Council Peach.
I'm not aware of anything, and that would be either Ward 2 or Ward 4.
There is, there has been an issue. I don't think that is a major issue that's causing the significant increase in the cost. So there is a neighbor that we're working with. The neighbors have been terrific, thankfully, because I know it's going to be a big inconvenience for them. But there is an issue, but it's not the cause of the increase.
And then the last question is just on behalf of Laurie Coleman. She had asked me, can they now drive buses over that bridge when it's completed? Will they be able to drive school buses over that bridge?
Yeah, we want to make sure Laurie's happy. Absolutely. Yeah, once it's complete. But that's why we have to do this project. Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Turco. Other members of the committee? Other councilors? Councilor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to transfer from account 1000000035901 from unreserved fund balance free cash, $195,000 to account number 300000058242202300000396, Endicott Street Bridge, again in the amount of $195,000. So move, Mr. Chairman.
The councilors hear the motion of Councilor Gould on the motion, seeing none, roll call.
Councilor Turco.
Yes.
Manning-Martin.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Gamache.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Next item on the agenda, transfer of funds, cable fund expense in amount of $17,425.74, cable fund expense in amount of $3,870.39. Mr. Gingrich.
Thank you. This is the fourth quarter payment from RCN for the cable fees and the transfer requests so that we can return the payments to PBD Access Television.
Questions from the committee? Questions from other councilors, seeing none, Councilor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry. Get my paperwork in, Mr. Chairman.
Item F.
Fell asleep at the switch. All right. I'd like to make a motion to transfer from account number, Receipts Reserved, account name, Receipts Reserved Cable Fund, account number 270000033017 in the amount of $17,425.74. And also, account 270000033017 in the amount of $3,872.39 to Cable Fund Expenses, account 270000053007 in the amount of $17,425.74. And to account 270000053007 in the amount of $3,872.39. So move, Mr. Chairman.
Councilors hear the motion of Councilor Gould on the motion, seeing none, roll call.
Councilor Turco.
Yes.
Manning-Martin. Gould.
Yes.
Gamache.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
This time I'd accept the motion, adjourn. Councilors, you heard the motion. All in favor and opposed, or vote, we are adjourned.
Good evening. The City Council will convene on Thursday, April 27th, 2023 to hold, excuse me. To hold a regular meeting at 7:30 PM for the purpose of discussing any and all business via in-person and remote participation in accordance with Chapter 40A of Massachusetts General Laws. Remote participation is allowed in accordance with Chapter 2 of Acts of 2023, signed into law by Governor Healy on March 29th, 2023, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 18. Remote participation is allowed in accordance with Chapter 2 of Acts of 2023. Alternative public access to this meeting shall be provided in the following manner. One, the meeting will be televised via PBD Access Television. Two, real-time public communication and comment during public hearings can be addressed to the PBD City Council utilizing the Zoom virtual meeting software for remote access. This application will allow users to view the meeting and make a comment or question for the chair via the audio option. Now, please join me in a moment of silence. And join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you, Councilor Gould. Councilors, you've heard the motion. All in favor and opposed, it's a vote. Moving into hearings.
Mr. President.
Excuse me.
The record's late one, is that correct? Is that what we're approving?
Yes, thank you, Councilman McGinn. The record was revised. So, we're gonna first accept, need a motion to accept late communication one.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilor Rosignol. You've heard the motion. On the motion, all in favor and opposed, it's a vote. Moving forward. And now, we need a motion to approve the record, the amended record.
Move, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilor Gould. Councilors, you've heard the motion. On the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote. Thank you. Moving into hearings this evening. Entertainment license for, entertainment license for Giro City PBD Inc., doing business as Cuzina, 134 Newbury Street, for non-live entertainment. The clerk will now read the notice.
Notice is hereby given that the City Council of the City of PBD will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, April 27th, 2023, at 7:30 PM in the Frank Elwigan Auditorium, 24 Lowell Street, PBD Mass, and remotely via Zoom on the application from Giro City PBD Inc., DBA Cuzina, 134 Newbury Street, PBD Mass, requesting an entertainment license for the use of non-live entertainment, specifically television and radio at said 134 Newbury Street, PBD Mass. For remote participation using the Zoom platform, please visit www.pbd-ma.gov under calendar on the homepage or contact the City Clerk's office. PBD City Council, Councilor Craig S. Welton, City Council President.
Thank you, Clerk Danforth. If the petitioner could provide your name and address and let us know what you'd like to do.
Penny Christopher, and I'm the owner of Giro City PBD Cuzina. I'm just applying for a non-live entertainment license, radio and TV.
Thank you. Is there anyone this evening who'd like to speak in favor of this petitioner? Anyone on Zoom who'd like to speak in favor? Seeing none? Is there anyone this evening who'd like to speak in opposition? Anyone on Zoom would like to speak in opposition? Seeing none? Councilor Gamache.
Yes, thank you. Welcome, Penny. Fortunately, you've been here a lot longer than you probably should have. For those who don't know the establishment, it's at 134 Newbury Street in the corner of that facility. Great business, great meals, great food. She's done a fantastic job up there, so if there's no other questions from the council, I'd move to close the public hearing.
Councilors, you've heard the motion from Councilor Gamache. All in favor, any opposed, it's a vote. Excuse me, Councilor Gould.
Thank you. Nothing on the motion. I just want to, one thing you left out, Councilor Gamache, is it's a great family. I know you intended to, so I cover it for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Gould. We certainly didn't want to miss that. Public hearing closed as you just requested, right? Okay. Rick Gamache.
Yes, at this time, I move approval on the application from Giro City PBD Inc., doing business as Cuzina, 134 Newbury Street, PBD Mass, requesting an entertainment license for the use of non-live entertainment, specifically television and radio at said 134 Newbury Street, PBD Mass. So moved.
Thank you, Councilor Gamache. Councilors, you've heard the motion. On the motion, roll call vote.
Counselors Turco.
Yes.
Daigle.
Yes.
O'Neil.
Yes.
Peach.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Rosignol.
Yes.
Gamache.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Welton.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Thank you, councilors. For item 4B, this is a Ward 1 issue. Oh, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you, councilors. For item 4B, this is a Ward 1 issue, so I'm going to ask Councilor Manning Martin to assume the chair.
Moving on to 4B, special permit for RMC Promotional Products, 95 Lynn Street. Would the clerk please read the notice?
Notice is hereby given that the City Council of the City of PBD, acting as the special permit granting authority, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, April 27th, 2023, at 7:30 PM in the Frank Elwigan Auditorium, 24 Lowell Street, PBD Mass, and remotely via Zoom on the application from RMC Promotional Products LLC, 203 Washington Street, Salem, Mass, for a special permit to allow for an office use for marketing and promotions at 95 Lynn Street, Unit 4, PBD Mass, as filed in accordance with Sections 4.2.5, 6.1, and 15.7 of the PBD zoning ordinance. For remote participation using the Zoom platform, please visit www.pbd-ma.gov under calendar on the homepage or contact the City Clerk's office. PBD City Council, Councilor Craig S. Welton, City Council President.
Thank you. Would the petitioner please state your name and address into the record and tell us what you'd like to do?
Yes, my name is Sam Fisher. I live at 8 Loring Avenue, Salem, and I'm looking to establish my office at 95 Lynn Street for my marketing and promotions company, RMC Promotional Products.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience to speak in favor of the petitioner? Anyone in the audience to speak in favor? How about on Zoom? Do we have anyone on Zoom? Do we have no one on Zoom? Is there anyone in the audience to speak in opposition? Anyone in the audience to speak in opposition? None on Zoom? Thank you. Council Welton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, councilors. I did have a chance to speak to the petitioner, Sam, and just to acquaint people with where this building is, Sam has purchased the unit on 95 Lynn Street, which is at the corner across from Tumi's Dry Cleaning. I think you all are aware that in the past, there's been some issues with parking on businesses that are in the front. I've confirmed with the petitioner that he has adequate parking that comes with the condo unit behind the actual building, so that's not going to be an issue for this. I spoke to some of the local business owners in the area and some of the neighbors. There's been no opposition, and we're looking forward to hopefully a favorable vote from the council because I think this is a good business to fit in with that neighborhood. So, I'll open it up to fellow councilors if there's any questions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Council Welton. Any councils have any comments? Counselor Turco.
Just one quick question, Madam Chair. Throw you to Council Welton. It says hours of operations, nine to five. Is it seven days a week?
It asked for hours, so I stated hours, but we don't really have exact hours. I'd be, it would just be myself working out of there, and I come and go to meet with clients, so I could be there on any given day, but I don't anticipate being there a great deal of time. And it would just be myself as far as cars or traffic. I envision it just being myself.
Okay, thank you.
Are y'all set? Counselor Turco?
Yes.
Any other councils, comments or questions? Council Welton?
Just if I may clarify also, after speaking with the petitioner, just to give you an idea of the type of work, he's sourcing promotional materials mostly, so there's not an anticipated heavy volume of deliveries. There's not an anticipated heavy volume of customers coming and going throughout the property. So, I don't know if that might help to address any of your potential concern, Counselor Turco, but as the petitioner stated, it's a, it's a pretty benign use.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the councilors? Being none, a motion to close the public hearing. Council Welton?
So moved. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You heard the motion. All in favor and opposed, it's a vote. Council Welton?
Thank you, Councilor Manning Martin. At this time, I would like to move to approve special permit for RMC Promotional Products LLC, 203 Washington Street, Salem, for a special permit to allow for an office use for marketing and promotions at 95 Lynn Street, Unit 4, PBD Mass, as filed in accordance with Section 4.2.5, 6.1, and 15.7 of the PBD zoning ordinance. So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Welton. Any comments? You heard the motion. Roll call. Counselors Turco.
Yes.
Daigle.
Yes.
O'Neil.
Yes.
Peach.
Yes.
Gould. Rosignol.
Yes.
Gamache. Melville.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Welton.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, councilors. Thank you, Councilor Manning Martin, for assuming the chair. And now, we're moving on to item 4C, a special permit for Maxwell Hill, 4 Lake Street, to allow for a tattoo establishment. The clerk will now read the notice.
Notice is hereby given that the City Council of the City of PBD, acting as the special permit granting authority, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, April 27th, 2023, at 7:30 PM in the Frank Elwigan Auditorium, 24 Lowell Street, PBD Mass, and remotely via Zoom on the application from Maxwell Hill, 34 Baldwin Road, Marblehead Mass, for a special permit to allow for a tattoo establishment at 4 Lake Street, PBD Mass, as filed in accordance with Sections 4.2.5, 6.1, and 15.7 of the PBD zoning ordinance. For remote participation using the Zoom platform, please visit www.pbd-ma.gov under calendar on the homepage or contact the City Clerk's office. PBD City Council, Councilor Craig S. Welton, City Council President.
Thank you, Clerk Danforth. If the petitioner, if you wouldn't mind, just providing your name and your address and what you'd like to do.
My name's Maxwell Hill. My address is 2 Magnolia Way, PBD Mass. I'm looking to open up a tattoo establishment at 4 Lake Street in PBD.
Great, thank you, Mr. Hill. At this moment, is there anyone here who'd like to speak in favor of this petitioner? Anyone in favor? Anyone on Zoom who'd like to speak in favor? Seeing none? Is there anyone here who'd like to speak in opposition to this petitioner? On Zoom, is there anyone? Seeing none? Councilor O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. President. As the applicant stated, Max Hill's interested in opening a tattooed establishment at 4 Lake Street, where Muncie South has had operated for close to 50 years. Max has been a tattoo artist for the last six years and looking to open his business at this location. This plaza, most of you are familiar with it, has a mix of small businesses, bakery, insurance agency, driving instruction school, as well as an Asian food restaurant. It's a fairly straightforward request. This establishment's going to be operated initially on an appointment-only basis. I don't have any major concerns, and I haven't received any phone calls or emails regarding this particular special permit. Before I open up to other councilors for questions or comments, I do want to note that I plan on incorporating the Health Department, Board of Health Department response to the special permit, which was included in our package, which was Mr. Hill has to apply for a tattoo establishment permit, as well as a practitioner permit, and that the Board of Health has to approve his plans prior to state of construction. And the last condition I'll offer up is that this shopping plaza closes down by 9:30 at night on most evenings, and I've spoken with Mr. Hill, and he's fine with a 9:30 closing time. And I'll condition that the hours will be from 10:00 AM to 9:30 PM, seven days a week. So, and I have spoken with Mr. Hill several times, and he's in agreement with these conditions. I'll now invite my fellow councilors to make comments or questions at this time. Thank you.
Let me begin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to the applicant, I just, I just noted on your application that you have the construction hours starting at 6:00 AM, and you need to be clear that the construction hours are 7:00 AM at the earliest, so.
Yeah, we spoke about changing that. We're gonna abide by that.
You'll abide by that?
Yeah.
Yeah, just so you're clear on that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor McGinn. Councilor O'Neil.
Yeah, through Council President, Councilor McGinn, we did speak about that, and he's aware of the hours, and certainly those will be followed. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor O'Neil. Are there any other councils on this matter? Seeing none, Councilor O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to close the public hearing. So moved.
Councilors, you've heard the motion from Councilor O'Neil. All in favor and opposed, it's a vote. Councilor O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, I'd move to approve the application from Maxwell Hill, 34 Baldwin Road, Marblehead, Mass, for a special permit to allow for a tattoo establishment at 4 Lake Street, PBD Mass, as filed in accordance with Sections 4.2.5, comma, 6.1, and 15.7 of the PBD zoning ordinance. So moved with the following conditions. Number one, the applicant must apply for a tattoo establishment and as well as a practitioner permit from the Board of Health. Condition number two, applicant must submit plans to the Board of Health prior to the start of construction. And condition number three, operation hours will be Monday through Friday, 10:00 AM to 9:30 PM. So moved.
Thank you, Councilor O'Neil. Councilors, you've heard the motion. On the motion, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Counselors Turco.
Yes.
Daigle.
Yes.
O'Neil. Peach. Manning Martin. Gould.
Yes.
Rosignol.
Yes.
Gamache.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Welton.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Thank you. Thank you, councilors. Moving on to item 4E. Before we step into item 4E, Councilor Daigle.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am going to recuse myself for the record and step out of the room. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Daigle. We'll give Councilor Daigle a moment to leave, and then we'll jump into item 4E. Thank you, councilors. I misspoke. I meant item 4D, an entertainment license for the Bell Inn LLC, 2 Washington Street, regarding live and non-live entertainment. The clerk will now read the notice.
Notice is hereby given that the City Council of the City of PBD will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, April 27th, 2023, at 7:30 PM in the Frank Elwigan Auditorium, 24 Lowell Street, PBD Mass, and remotely via Zoom on the application from the Bell Inn LLC, 2 Washington Street, PBD Mass, requesting an entertainment license for the use of non-live entertainment, specifically television, CD player, radio, electronic jukebox, digital jukebox, background music, and movies, and live entertainment, specifically karaoke, DJ, social entertainment, comedy acts, and live music at said 2 Washington Street, PBD Mass. For remote participation using the Zoom platform, please visit www.pbd-ma.gov under calendar on the homepage or contact the City Clerk's office. PBD City Council, Councilor Craig S. Welton, City Council President.
Thank you, Clerk Danforth. If the petitioner could provide her name, address, and what you'd like to do.
Sure. Good evening. Jill Mann, legal counsel for the Bell Inn. My office is located in Middletown, Massachusetts. I'm here on behalf of, obviously, the Bell Inn, seeking an entertainment license. Here this evening is also one of the principals, Ed Greeley. We did submit a full request for entertainment, but we did have some negotiations relative to a couple of butters for the hours. So, the petition that we did submit, we'd like to amend. I don't know, do I, is practice to read out the agreements with regard to the amendment of the time?
Excuse me, once, Councilor McGinn, you had a thought on this?
Just for the sake of brevity, I can just include it in the conditions, and then they can acknowledge agreement, so.
So, perfect. So, we have actually discussed it and agreed to the modifications, so we're here to request that and answer any questions that any of the council people would like to ask.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here this evening who'd like to speak in favor of the petitioner? Anyone on Zoom who'd like to speak in favor of the petitioner? Seeing none? Anyone who'd like to speak in opposition to the petitioner? Anyone on Zoom would like to speak in opposition? Seeing none? Councilor McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think everybody in the council is quite familiar with the transformative project that's taken place at 2 Washington Street. As their attorney mentioned, I have met with the applicants, Mr. Greeley, as well as with his partner, Mr. Calla, and need to fully understand the nature of the types of entertainment they plan to offer. I think the, one of the overarching important things for all councilors to understand is that their intent is to provide entertainment that's not disruptive to their own hotel guests. So, accordingly, if they're not bothering their own hotel guests and impacting the enjoyment of their stay, it shouldn't be disruptive to the residential butters. And so, to, in this circumstance, to a considerable extent, it's somewhat self-regulating. Just for clarity, there's three possible entertainment locations on the property. Indoor entertainment on the first floor will typically complement the dining experience. Indoor entertainment in the basement level will be in a soundproof contained space. And I did have an opportunity to tour that. to tour that. Based on the new construction that's happening down there, I think they'll be able to deliver on that. And then outdoor entertainment, which would typically either be low background music or music related to an event that would not be amplified. They will also have onsite management at all times, so that they'd be able to be responsive to any neighborhood concerns. This one's a little unusual in a couple of respects, what we haven't typically done, outdoor entertainment in PBD. And it's in a pretty congested area. In fact, there's 94 residential dwelling units located in the properties listed on the 2 Washington Street abutters list. I've talked to the property owners that own the majority of these units, and, well, suffice to say, there was concern from all of them about the potential impacts on the entertainment license would have on tenants and on property values. I'm pleased to say that after working with the applicant and reviewing with them the anticipated types and locations of entertainment and the conditions to which the applicant's agreeable, that they've all become more comfortable with the situation and have opted to not oppose it. In fact, we don't see anybody here tonight or online. And again, I had heard from a number of them, so I think we've found a good place here. I support the application, and at this time, I would defer to other councilors. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor McGinn. Counselor Peach.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Counselor McGinn. Can you state the hours that you agreed to? Thank you.
So, indoor, non-live, and indoor live entertainment, the hours are 10:00 AM to 12:00 AM, Monday through Saturday. Indoor live entertainment may consist of up to four musicians, performers, and up to three amplifiers. Outdoor non-live entertainment and outdoor live entertainment, the hours are 11:00 AM to 8:00 PM, Monday through Thursday, and 11:00 AM to 9:00 PM, Friday and Saturday. Outdoor non-live entertainment is limited to landscape speakers for background music and shall not be audible beyond the property fence. Outdoor live entertainment may consist of up to three musicians, performers, and all outdoor entertainment will be non-amplified. Any microphone will be, may be used outdoors on a limited basis for the purpose of making brief announcements during functions. So those are the, those are the conditions.
Thank you.
Any other councilors on this matter? Seeing none, Counselor McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to close the public hearing.
Councilors, you've heard the motion from Counselor McGinn. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to approve the application from Bell Inn LLC 2 Washington Street, PBD Mass, requesting an entertainment license for the use of non-live entertainment, specifically television, CD player, radio, electronic jukebox, digital jukebox, background music, and movies, and live entertainment, specifically karaoke, DJ, social entertainment, comedy acts, and live music, at said 2 Washington Street, PBD Mass, with the following conditions. Indoor non-live entertainment and indoor live entertainment hours are 10:00 AM to 12:00 AM, Monday to Saturday. Indoor live entertainment may consist of up to four musicians/performers and up to three amplifiers. Outdoor non-live entertainment and outdoor live entertainment, the hours are 11:00 AM to 8:00 PM, Monday to Thursday, 11:00 AM to 9:00 PM, Friday and Saturday. Outdoor non-live entertainment is limited to landscape speakers for background music and shall not be audible beyond the property fence. Outdoor live entertainment may consist of up to three musicians, performers, and all outdoor entertainment will be non-amplified. A microphone may be used outdoors on a limited basis for the purpose of making brief announcements during functions. Owners will make ongoing reasonable efforts to prevent noise from becoming disruptive to residential abutters. So moved.
Thank you, Counselor McGinn. Councilors, you've heard the mo, on the motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Counselors Turco.
Yes.
O'Neil.
Yes.
Peach.
Yes.
Manny Martin.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Gamash.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Welton.
Yes.
Motion carries 10 to 0. Thank you very much.
I'm going to get Counselor Daigle. Thank you, councilors. We're going to wait for Counselor Daigle to return. All right. Thank you, councilors. Moving on, we're going to take out of order a report from the ICD Committee. Counselor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. President. This evening, we met for what seems like an eternity to try to hammer out the mill overlay district language, and we were successful. There was a positive vote, and there was a motion made by Counselor McGinn that the mill overlay district amendment, and it was a favorable recommendation. Proposed language in item 8-B with an edit of section 6.1, 6.15.1 be the only changed. And I bring this before the full council. Thank you. Oh, thank you, Counselor Rozignol. Motion to receive, 8H also.
Councilors, you've heard the motion from Counselor Gould. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor Gould.
I bring for a vote for the full council, I said. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gould. At this time, Counselor Daigle.
Thank you, Mr. President. To avoid a conflict of interest and to get my steps in, I'm going to recuse myself and step out of the room.
Thank you, Counselor Daigle. Okay, having heard the report from ICD, we are now moving on to item 4E. Excuse me. My apologies, councilors. We are going to vote on the mod that was suggested from the ICD Committee. So, we're now going to bring that forward. Counselor Gould.
I believe, Counselor, Mr. President, that there's a vote. Roll call vote, please.
You are correct. There is a roll call vote on the floor. Thank you. And thank you all for bearing with me. This one's a little bit tricky. So, roll call vote on that mod.
Counselors Turco.
Yes.
O'Neil.
Yes.
Peach.
Yes.
Manny Martin.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Gamash.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Welton.
Yes.
Motion carries 10 to 0.
Thank you. Counselor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. President. We also met in regards to the zoning ordinance redesignating following parcels from residential R2 to Central Business BC, which on the assesses map is 085 parcel 002H and number 10 Monroe Street, and also on the assesses map, 085 parcel 002I, my eye sight is 2I, and number 12 Monroe Street. We met, and there was a negative vote, so I don't present this to the full body. Thank you, Mr. President. Make a motion to receive item 8I.
Thank you, Counselor Rozignol. Councilors, you've heard the motion from Counselor Rozignol. Receive item 8I. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Okay, thank you, councilors. At this time, I would like to ask Clerk Danforth to read item 4F. Excuse me, 4E.
Notice is hereby given that the City Council of the City of PBD will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, April 27, 2023, at 7:30 PM in the Frank L. Wigan Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, PBD Mass, in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 48, Section 5 of the Massachusetts General Laws, to consider amending the zoning ordinance of the City of PBD as follows. Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of PBD as follows, that the zoning ordinance of the City of PBD entitled "Zoning Ordinance 2011, as amended through October 27, 2022," is hereby further amended as follows. Section 1, by amending Section 6, entitled "Special Regulations," as follows, by deleting in its entirety Section 6.15 Mill Overlay District, as adopted on March 14, 2019, and inserting in place thereof a new Section 6.15 entitled "Mill Overlay District," as follows. 6.15 purpose, 6.15.1 establishment and boundaries, 6.15.2 applicability and relationship to underlying zoning, 6.15.3 permitted uses, 6.15.3.1, the following uses shall be permitted by right in the Mill Overlay District, 6.15.3.2, the following uses shall be permitted by a special permit in the Mill Overlay District, 6.15.4 parking, landscaping, facade, signs, and pedestrian accommodation, 6.15.5 noise, 6.15.6 light, 6.15.7 waivers. Section 2, that the zoning map of the City of PBD, entitled "City of PBD Zoning Map," adopted April 28, 2011, as amended, is further, hereby further amended as follows. The following parcels are included within the Mill Overlay District. Assesses map 53 parcel 46A and numbered 56 Pulaski Street. Assesses map 53 parcel 46C and numbered 58 Pulaski Street rear. Assesses map 53 parcel 47 and numbered 58 Pulaski Street. Assesses map 53 parcel 85 and numbered 60 Pulaski Street. Assesses map 53 parcel 87 and numbered 58 Pulaski Street. Assesses map 53 parcel 500 and numbered 58 Pulaski Street A. Assesses map 53 parcel 501 and numbered 56 Pulaski Street B. Assesses map 53 parcel 502 and numbered 56 Pulaski Street C. Assesses map 53 parcel 503 and numbered 56 Pulaski Street D. Assesses map 53 parcel 504 and numbered 56 Pulaski Street E. Assesses map 53 parcel 505 and numbered 56 Pulaski Street F and G. Assesses map 53 parcel 506 and numbered 56 Pulaski Street H. Assesses map 53 parcel 507 and numbered 56 Pulaski Street I. Assesses map 53 parcel 508 and numbered 56 Pulaski Street J, or any new subdivision of the lots thereof. Copies of the proposed mod zoning amendment are available for public viewing at the City Clerk's Office or Office of Community Development and Planning, City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, PBD Mass, or posted on the City of PBD website at www.pbd-ma.gov. Section 3, all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent herewith are hereby repealed. Section 4, this ordinance shall take effect as provided by law. PBD City Council, Allison M. Danforth, City Clerk.
Thank you, Clerk Danforth. Any clarification needed from any councilors on that? Are we good? Okay. Calling up Kurt Belavant, Office of Community Development.
Good evening, City Council. Kurt Belavant, Director of Planning and Community Development for the City of PBD. I came before the City Council about four years ago. Our office was proposing to create a new district, the Mill Overlay District, on a property known as 58 Pulaski Street. At that time, the City Council adopted that. The project, and our intention for that project, was successful. We came back last year to expand that district to include the adjacent property. That, the City Council adopted that as well. But at that time, there were some questions in regards to some of the issue, some of the parts of the ordinance in regards to new construction, special permit, I'm sorry, Site Plan Review Authority, and so forth. So, we went back to the drawing board and revised the Mill Overlay District. Our intention partly was to expand that. There was not a prohibition for new construction, but we wanted to make sure that we were clear in regards to that. So if there was new construction, we wanted to maintain a certain design criteria. So we put that into the Mill Overlay District. There was also questions in regards to where could this Mill Overlay District be placed throughout the city. So we wanted to clarify that and be more specific in regards to the Pulaski Street area versus other locations throughout the city. Then, lastly, we, we had modified some of the uses in regards to what was allowed and what was by special permit. But the, the main function of the, of this change in the ordinance was to provide more design criteria. So when people were, or applicants were coming forward to propose a new project, we wanted to make sure they met those, met that criteria. We also included the, wanted to make sure that the planning board still maintained their site plan approval process. But similar to the BC District, there were additional design criteria that they would meet and be part of the site plan process. Those are the highlights of the modified zoning amendment, and I'd be happy to answer any questions in regards to that.
Thank you, Mr. Belavant. Are there any councilors who have any questions for Mr. Belavant at this time? Anyone from the public who has any questions about this? Anyone in favor who would like to speak in favor of this? Anyone on Zoom would like to speak in favor? Anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Anyone on Zoom would like to speak in opposition? Seeing none. Counselor Peach.
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess I'm just a little confused on the process. Did we not just vote on this from the committee? Or that was just the report? We agreed with the report? Oh, we should. Lots of rules here. So I, at this time, will move to close the public hearing.
Councilors, you've heard the motion from Counselor Peach. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor Peach.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to the clerk. Just before I begin, does the language that's been voted on need to be read? The whole thing? I think Counselor Gould should do this one. Okay. Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of PBD as followed, that the zoning ordinance of the City of PBD entitled "Zoning Ordinance 1978, as amended, is hereby further amended as follows. Section 1, by adding Section 6.15 Mill Overlay District to the zoning ordinance. Section 6.15 Mill Overlay District, 6.15 purpose, the Mill Overlay District mod and uses created herein are intended to encourage a diverse mix of business, commercial, office, institutional, and otherwise uses for workers and visitors within the existing envelope of the existing buildings; b) not detract from the livability and aesthetic qualities of the existing neighborhood; c) permit the preservation of existing structures through conversion to new uses in a manner that maintains and enhances the visual character and architectural scale of existing development within the district; d) promote more efficient use of land while protecting natural resources such as water resources, wetlands, floodplains, and wildlife. Building within the floodplain is prohibited; e) permit an appropriate density of new development to support a vibrant mixed-use area; f) encourage first-floor retail restaurant space; g) encourage an active site through mixed uses and high-quality design; h) minimize visual and functional conflicts between non-residential and residential uses abutting the district; i) encourage consolidation of curb cuts for vehicular access and promote more efficient and economical parking facilities; j) allow a more compact development that may be permitted in other zonings to reduce the impacts of sprawl; and k) encourage a pedestrian and bicycle-friendly environment. the impacts of sprawl; and k) encourage a pedestrian and bicycle-friendly environment." 6.15.1 Establishment and Boundaries. The mod is hereby established and consists of the areas shown on the zoning map on file with the City Clerk. The mod, which includes in part the properties historically known as 58 Pulaski Street, is superimposed over the underlying zoning air, zoning districts established by the zoning ordinance. The mod is an area which includes, but is not limited to, at least three or more mill buildings, and all properties immediately abutting a defined mill building that reside in the underlining, the same underlying zone. Yes. A mill building is defined as a brick building constructed prior to 1900, which was at one time used for manufacturing or industry. The following parcels are included as part of the mod. Assessors' map 53, Parcels 46A, 46C, 47, 85, 87, 500 through 508, or any new subdivision of the lots thereof. 6.15.2 applicability in relationship to the underlying zoning. The mod is an overlay district superimposed on underlying zoning districts within the mod. The regulations for dimensions and all of the provisions of the zoning ordinance governing the underlying zoning districts shall remain in full force. To the extent that there is a conflict in the provisions of the underlying zoning and the provisions of the mod, the provisions of this section shall govern. Additional site and design criteria within this section shall be applicable to all new buildings or structures or significant alterations to existing buildings or facades. This section shall be part of the site plan review process, see Section 12. 6.15.3 permitted uses. The following uses are permitted as more specifically described below. 6.15.3.1 The following uses shall be permitted by right in the mod. A) Mixed uses that are currently lawfully existing. B) Retail sales establishments excluding automobile-related businesses up to 4,500 square feet.
Excuse me to interrupt Counsel Peach. I think we're going to give you a little bit of a reprieve here. The clerk indicated that you can read the section numbers as, as indicated.
Well, that's what I asked. Clarify just the section numbers, as we agreed upon in the committee report? All right. Yeah, I think this is some type of first-year counselor hazing happening here. So permitted uses, so what are they? So 6.15.3 permitted uses, 6.15.3.1 The following uses shall be permitted by right in the mod. 6.15.3.2 The following uses shall be permitted by special permit in the mod. 6.15.4 General site and design criteria for the Mill Overlay District. 6.15.5 Building and design criteria for new buildings or buildings with exterior renovations. 6.15.6 Historic relationship. 6.15.7 Noise. 6.15.8 Light. Section 2, this ordinance shall take effect as provided by law. Section 3, the zoning map shall take effect as provided by law. I make that in the form of a motion to draft and advertise, so moved.
Councilors, you've heard the motion. Any discussion on the motion? Any requests for that motion to be repeated? Seeing none. Roll call vote.
Counselors Turco?
Yes.
O'Neill?
Yes.
Peach?
Yes.
Manning Martin?
Yes.
Gould?
Rosignol?
Yes.
Gamache?
Yes.
Melville?
Begin?
Yes.
Welton?
Yes.
Motion carries, ten to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, councilors. Moving on, item 4F, zoning ordinance re-designated in the following parcels from residential R2 to central business B.C. Assessors' map 085, parcel 002H and numbered 10 Monroe Street. Assessors' map 085, parcel 002I and numbered 12 Monroe Street. On this hearing, excuse me, on this item, this, as we received the report from ICD earlier this evening, this suggested zoning modification received a negative recommendation from ICD, so this is no longer before us this evening. Counsel Peach.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was, my understanding that the vote, the motion was to report it out favorably, which it failed, so my understanding is it remains in committee. Would that, through you to the clerk, is that the process?
Say that again?
The motion that was made was to report out favorably, which failed in committee. Would that then leave this in committee? Because it was not voted to, you know, be sent to the council with a negative, you know, the negative vote.
The motion failed in committee and was reported out as a failed motion.
So through the clerk, the petitioner has no additional avenue to be heard on the advertised hearing.
It's my understanding that a negative report of committee is now, means that the issue is dead, for lack of a better word, and that the hearing would not be opened. And it's no longer before the council. It's been disposed of.
I would just like to make a comment on that. I feel that while there was some discussion in committee, I don't know that there was a lot of discussion from other councilors to weigh in. And also, while the public was able to come to speak, they wouldn't have been able to speak until this hearing, technically. You know, the neighbors were in support of this change, but felt it wasn't a contested issue, so they were waiting to speak to the council for the special permit hearing. So I don't know, I just, if there's a way to continue this on the council agenda, or... My opinion is, we had three people voted down, and there's 11 people on this council not to be heard.
Counsel Rosignol?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with Counsel Peach. So we have before us a favorable recommendation from the planning board. We have two out of three councilors on the subcommittee that voted in favor of this particular item, but it can't be vetted by the council as a whole. Not only did this happen just in ICD, but it actually happened in finance as well. They came back as a two-to-two recommendation. To me, our rules are flawed, to be perfectly honest with you. I think it makes no sense that a subcommittee has that much power that they can literally throw something away without all of 11 of us having the opportunity to speak on that manner. I just, I just think honestly, we need to relook at our rules, because the fact that we're all equal, in my opinion, every single one of us should have the opportunity to be able to expound and speak on a matter in favor or in opposition. And the fact that this body, as its entirety, was denied that, I think is wrong. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Rosignol. Counsel Melville, did you have something to say?
I was just, my comment was going to be counsel, that the, the, there's really nothing else to discuss on this, and that the actual solution for councilors is to identify, if possible, what the petitioner could do if they wanted to resubmit it through ICD and go through that process again. It is a zoning change, and there are very specific rules regarding that. And, you know, if, a discussion on the council rules, you could make a motion to suspend such rules, but since it really is a moot point if you had, you know, a negative vote anyway. But it would be a discussion for the rules is another time, as this is actually a zoning change that was reported out negatively, and I think that's really the solution is to find, to allow the petitioner to pursue their avenues instead of kind of debating it on the floor. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Melville. Counsel Turco?
I mean, thank you. I mean, I just want to voice my opinion, since it was mentioned by others. I, I voted in favor of this, so, but what I'm not in favor of is some of the commentary, welcome to U.S. government. I mean, the subcommittee's vote at the legislative level, at the national level, and if it doesn't make it out of subcommittee, it doesn't go before the full House of Representatives. It doesn't go before the full legislature. That's just the way it is. So, you know, although I was in favor of this, I'm also in favor of the form of government that we have, so just wanted to voice that.
Thank you, Counsel Turco. Counsel O'Neill?
Thank you, Mr. President. I can't add anything. Counsel Melville said it perfectly. It's not before us this evening. It could be in another time, but it's not before us. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel O'Neill. Counsel Manning Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to comment on remarks that councilors weren't able to speak. And if I can hack in the words of the late, great Peter Turegian, every member has an opportunity to show up at every subcommittee and speak on any matter that they, that they wish to. They don't need to be a member. And that opportunity presented itself this evening as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Manning Martin. Any other councilors? Okay, moving on to item 4G, special permit, 180 Newberry LLC, 180 Newberry Street, regarding automotive repair shop in BR1 zoning district. The clerk will now read the notice. The petitioner, please introduce yourself and let us know what you'd like to do.
Thank you, Mr. President. John Kelty, on this matter and the very next matter, both of these are related to the extent that there is an issue with respect to these premises. My client, Frank Taibbi, bought it, and with his purchase, there was a tenant in place. My client has learned that there cannot be a tenant in this BH zone property. We have given the tenant a notice to quit. It is also my understanding that ward councilor and other councilors feel that while the tenant is in the premises, this matter should not be considered, and as such, I have continuance letters asking that we accept the letter as a request for continued deliberations on the matter, both of them till June 8, 2023. I think that that gives us enough time. Our 30-day notice went out over 30 days ago, and we'll try to resolve the issue of the illegal tenant. So I have both matters.
Thank you, Attorney Kelty. Just as a procedural matter, of course, would you mind just recommending those in two separate recommendations, two separate continuances, that we're going to continue item 8G and then 8H? So if I could get a motion from one of the councilors?
Yes, I move to accept the petitioner's request to move it to 6823. On the matter of special permit, LLC 180 Newberry Street Automotive Repair Shop in the BR1 zoning district, so moved.
Thank you, Counsel Gamache. Councilors, you've heard the motion from Counsel Gamache regarding, again, this is item 8G, special permit for 180 Newberry LLC. On the motion, any discussion? Counsel Gamache?
Yes, I'd like to accept the letter that's being given to the clerk from the petitioner requ, making that request, so moved.
Can I get a motion to receive and approve that letter?
Motion to receive and approve.
Councilors, you've heard the motion from Counsel Gamache. On the motion, any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor and opposed at the vote? Now, Counsel Gamache, we can take the second part of that, if you don't mind.
Yes, the petitioner stated that he would request the continuance to 6823, with him submitting a request in writing, and I would move to receive the request and approve, so moved.
Thank you, Counsel Gamache. Councilors, you've heard the motion from Counsel Gamache. On the motion, any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor and opposed at the vote? All right, those matters are continued. Thank you. Thank you, Attorney Kelty. Moving on to reports on committees. First, I'd like to go to Counsel Melville for the ad hoc charter review committee from earlier this week.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had an ad hoc charter review committee meeting on April 25. All councilors were present. We had a great discussion, as usual. This has been a really good exercise, and we are starting to get some really tangible results, and I can see the finish line. So we have eight motions that were made that evening. Also, I wanted to point out, Lake Commissioner Ray Melvin had attended, gave some comments. We had, Attorney Barrett had presented some responses to the previous meeting that we went over, and then we touched on Article 5, Article 6, Article 7 of the charter. Along with Counsel Manning Martin had provided some comments from the Beverly Charter that we were going to include as well. And I have eight motions this evening, and all but one was unanimous, so I'm going to start with the one that was not unanimous, so that will make it a little easier to get through this, okay? All right. The first one was a motion made by Counselor McGinn. It was moved to request an opinion of the city auditor regarding Section 7-6 of the proposed charter to identify consistencies with current practices and compliance with MGL, Mass. General Law. That was carried 9 to 2 with Counsel Manning Martin and Counselor Rosignol opposed. I'd like to make that in the form of the motion, and a roll call vote, please.
Thank you, Counsel Melville. Councilors, you've heard the motion. On the motion, roll call vote.
Counselors Turco?
Yes.
Daigle?
Yes.
O'Neill?
Yes.
Peach?
Yes.
Manning Martin?
No.
Gould?
Yes.
Rosignol?
No.
Gamache?
Yes.
Melville?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Welton?
Yes.
Motion carries 9 to 2.
Okay, the rest of the motions were passed unanimously by the council, 11 to 0. First is from Counsel Peach. Moved to request Assistant City Solicitor Barrett clarify the legality of a six-year term for all elected municipal offices and background or legal precedents on six-year terms, so moved.
Thank you, Counsel Melville. Councilors, you've heard the motion. On the motion, any discussion? Seeing none? Roll call vote.
No, you, it's up to you. I don't think it's necessary.
My apologies. All in favor and opposed at the vote? Counsel Melville?
All right. Next is a motion by Counsel Turco. It was moved to request Assistant City Solicitor Barrett explain his inclusion of MGL Chapter 164, Section 5, regarding the creation of municipal light plant as referenced in the council and how it pertains to term length requirements under law, so moved.
Thank you, Counsel Melville. Councilors, you've heard the motion. On the motion, any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor and opposed at the vote? Counsel Melville?
We had a motion from Counsel Manning Martin, which is to request the Assistant City Solicitor advise the City Council whether it is within the power of the City Council to reduce the term of municipal light plant from six-year terms, so moved.
Thank you, Counsel Melville. Councilors, you've heard the motion. On the motion, any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor and opposed at the vote? Counsel Melville?
The next motion is a motion from Counselor McGinn. It was moved to request the Assistant City Solicitor Barrett evaluate the remainder of the language in Chapter 286 of Acts of 1951, to see if anything would still be germane after the legislature approved the new charter for the City of Peabody and would include language that would seemingly cover most of what was in the original act, so moved.
Thank you, Counsel Melville. Councilors, you've heard the motion. On the motion, any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor and opposed at the vote? Counsel Melville?
Next, we had a motion from Counselor McGinn. It was a motion to request the Assistant City Solicitor evaluate Section 7-3 and 7-4, and advise on the permissibility and/or desirability of establishing charter provisions, and may be redundant to and conflict with or be in complete representation of Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 33, so moved.
Thank you, Counsel Melville. Councilors, you've heard the motion. On the motion, any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor and opposed at the vote?
And the last was a motion from Counselor McGinn. It was a motion to request the Assistant City Solicitor Barrett evaluate Section 7-6, the last sentence on page 38, line 4 through 6. Any official who violates this section shall be personally liable to the city for any amounts to be expanded on, to extent to which the city does not recover these amounts from person to whom the sums were not paid, to ascertain whether that provision can be included, given Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 31, and does not appear to include the penalty, so moved.
Thank you, Counsel Melville. Councilors, you've heard the motion. On the motion, any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor and opposed at the vote? Counsel Melville?
And that concludes the motions that would be reported out to the committee. There were some, there's some work for the city clerk and I to do on other items that came up at the meeting that night that will be included. up at the meeting that night that will be included in our next packet. And it was a great meeting, and I appreciate everybody's time. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Melville, and also thank you again for your leadership on that committee. I know we've gotten a lot of work done, and I appreciate your diligence in doing so. We're going, we are going to skip the Industrial Community Development Committee recap, as Counselor Gould has already provided that out of order. We're now moving on to Legal Affairs Committee. Counselor O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. President. Legal Affairs Committee met earlier this evening. Present were committee members, Councilors McGinn, Melville, Peach, and Turco. We're also joined by Councilors Daigle, Manning Martin, Gould, and Gamache. We had one item on this evening's agenda. It was the discussion of proposed land acquisition of two parcels known as Zero Sherwood Avenue and Zero Spring Pond Road, and authorized Mayor Betancourt to sign legal documents which would allow the city to acquire these parcels for a total of $7.2 million. Mayor Betancourt appeared before the committee to give an overview of the proposed purchase. He was joined by City Solicitor Don Kahn, Finance Director Mike Jingeris, as well as Director of Community Development Kurt Belvance. Mayor Belvane outlined, Mayor Betancourt, excuse me, outlined the considerable efforts of the city departments working with the Diabassi family who own this land in support, in supporting the efforts for this acquisition. He also noted Counselor McGinn's efforts to, especially to support this deal. There was a significant possibility of future resident development at these parcels, which currently abut significant open space owned by PBD, and that this proposed purchase is not the traditional situation based on limits to what a city can pay, based on limits to what a city can pay in acquisition. The development potential of these parcels would significantly be higher than the undeveloped current value. So, as a result, it was decided that this would be a friendly eminent domain process, which would be the preferred method. There was widespread support for this land acquisition during the committee to create open space, additional open space, especially since these parcels abut significant areas of city property. In addition, the efforts to acquire this land will prevent future resident development at these parcels, which could have an adverse effect on abutting neighbors, as well as potentially creating flooding concerns. The agreed-upon $7.2 million purchase price is documented in the release and settlement agreement, which has already been signed by Paul Diabassi, who's the treasurer, excuse me, the trustee of the Realty Trust who owns the property. These two separate release and settlement agreements basically outline that all parties agree to the price and waive all future rights to abide by, to abide by this agreement. In short, there will not be a case of either party coming back at a further date contesting the $7.2 million price. There were two motions that came out of the committee. The first was made by Counselor McGinn, and it was passed by a vote of 5 to 0. I now bring this motion for the full council's consideration.
Thank you, Counselor O'Neil. Counselors, you've heard the motion. Excuse me.
Counsel, Mr. President, I have to, let me read the motion, please. Just trying to find it. Be it ordered that the city council of the city of PBD hereby takes such action as is necessary to acquire by eminent domain the fee in the parcels of land known and numbered Zero Sherwood Avenue and Zero Spring Pond Road, PBD, Essex County, Massachusetts, the property, and more particularly described in a deed dated July 7, 2000, from Hugo Diabassi to Paul Diabassi, trustee of the Osborne Hills Realty Trust, recorded with the Essex South Registry of Deeds, recorded with the Essex South Registry of Deeds at Book 16455, Page 108, as affected by a conformatory deed recorded in Book 17338, Page 313, and is affected by a conformatory deed recorded Book 4411474, Page 120, and by deed registered with the Essex County South District Registry of Deeds, District of the Land Court, as Document 641883, Certificate of Title Number 96312, and to accomplish the foregoing, execute the order of taking presented to us this day by council and further awarded $7,200,000 pursuant to the release and settlement agreements as damages for such taking to the land affected by such taking in the city council, April 27, 2023. So, moved.
Thank you, Counselor O'Neil. Counselors, you've heard the motion. On the motion, any discussion? Roll call vote.
Counselors Turco.
Yes.
Daigle.
Yes.
O'Neil.
Yes.
Peach.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Gould. Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Gamache. Melville.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Welton.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Counselor O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. President. The second motion was made by Counselor McGinn, and that passed by a vote of 5 to 0. I'll now bring that motion forward to the, for the council's consideration. Be so that it ordered that the city council of the city of PBD hereby takes action as is necessary to acquire by eminent domain the fee in a parcel of land known and numbered Zero Sherwood Avenue and Zero Spring Pond Road, PBD, Essex County, Massachusetts, the property, and more particularly described in a deed dated July 7, 2000, from Hugo Diabassi to Paul Diabassi, trustee of the Osborne Hills Realty Trust. Sorry, I think I'm reading the wrong one here. Hold on. Sorry. Yep, okay. Sorry. Back up. Sorry. I'm reading the same one that I just did. So, apologize. Let me start again. Be so it ordered. Mr. President, is it okay? I, yeah, sorry. Apologize to everyone, especially at the time of night. But be so it ordered at a regularly scheduled meeting of the city council of the city of PBD held the 27th day of April 2023. It was voted and ordered the city council of the city of PBD duly elect, okay, this is my first day on the job. Okay, sorry. Back again. Remind me to fire my secretary. I got it.
As a reminder, counselors, as we're figuring this out, we are going to have to sign both of these. So, please, once Counselor O'Neil proposes this, just, we're going to have to sign both. Thank you.
Are you sure? Okay, okay. Mr. President, can we take a two-minute recess just to make sure I get this straightened?
On that motion, any, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. We have a two-minute recess. Thank you. Thank you, counselors. We are ready to move forward. Counselor O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. President. I apologize to all my fellow counselors for paper missing up and not getting the right one. But the motion, the second motion passed 5 to 0, and I'll now bring it forth before the council. Be so it ordered that the city council of the city of PBD hereby, that the city council of the city of PBD on behalf of the city and by the virtue of, and in accordance with the authority of the provisions of Chapter 79 of the Mass General Law, as amended in the city code of the city of PBD, Massachusetts, Part 1, Chapter, Section 35, condemnation of land for municipal purpose and of any, every other power and authority which is here to, here unto, in any way enabling, adopts an order of taking to acquire for preservation of open space and to facilitate passive recreation, together with the attendant customary purposes and uses, and for all appurtenances related thereto, to take, thereto, take fee ownership interest in the parcels of land known and numbered Zero Sherwood Avenue and Zero Spring Pond Road, PBD, Essex County, Massachusetts, the property, and more particularly described in a deed dated July 7, 2000, from Hugo Diabassi to Paul Diabassi, trustees of the Osborne Hills Realty Trust, recorded with the Essex South Registry of Deeds at Book 1645, Page 108, as affected by a conformatory deed recorded in Book 17338, Page 313, and is affected by a conformatory deed recorded Book 4411474, Page 120, and by deed registered with the Essex County South District Registry of Deeds, District of the Land Court, as Document 641883, Certificate of Title Number 96312, and to accomplish the foregoing, execute the order of taking presented to us this day by council and further award $7,200,000 pursuant to the release and settlement agreements as damages for such taking to this land affected by such taking in the city council, April 27, 2023. So, moved.
Thank you, Counselor O'Neil. Counselors, you've heard the motion from Counselor O'Neil. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Counselors Turco.
Yes.
Daigle.
Yes.
O'Neil.
Yes.
Peach.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Gamache. Melville. McGinn.
Yes.
Welton.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Thank you. And counselors, Counselor O'Neil has both of those that will be circulating for signatures. Excuse me, Colleen is doing that.
Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes my report of Legal Affairs Committee. Thank you.
Counselor O'Neil. Moving on to Finance Committee report. Counselor McGinn, after you have a minute to sign that.
Thank you, Mr. President. Finance Committee met earlier this evening. Present for the committee were Counselors Gamache, Gould, Manning Martin, Turco, and myself as chair. All other city councilors were present. We had several items on the agenda. First item was bond order in an amount of $7.2 million for land acquisition, for acquisition of the property at Zero Spring Pond Road and Zero Sherwood Avenue. This was the matter that was more thoroughly vetted at Legal Affairs that you just heard in the report of committee from Chairman O'Neil. This was, this matter was brought before us by His Honor, the mayor, and it is essentially a funding, the funding mechanism by which the acquisition that we favorably on in Legal Affairs and now, as the full council will be exercised. There was, again, this was explained by His Honor, the mayor, and supported by Director of Finance, Mr. Jingeris, and subsequently, a motion was made by Counselor Turco as follows. Ordered that $7,200,000 is appropriated for land acquisition of property located at Zero Spring Pond Road and Zero Sherwood Avenue, consisting of 38 acres and 38.282 acres, more or less, and more particularly described in Assessors Map 116, Lot 255, and Map 110, Lot 002X, including the payment of any costs incidental or related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the mayor is authorized to borrow said amount under Chapter 44 of the general laws or any other enabling authority, that the treasurer, the mayor, and any other city official is authorized to take actions necessary or convenient to carry out the purpose of this order, and that this order be adopted and advertised as read. Mr. President, that motion passed the Finance Committee unanimously with a 5-0 vote, and I'll bring it for consideration of the full council. So, moved.
Thank you, Counselor McGinn. Counselors, you've heard the motion. On the motion, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Counselors Turco.
Yes.
Daigle.
Yes.
O'Neil.
Yes.
Peach.
Yes.
Manning Martin. Gould.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Gamache. Melville.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Welton.
Yes.
Motion carries 10 to 0.
Counselor McGinn.
Mr. President, the next item on the agenda was in response to a motion made by Counselor Manning Martin, co-motion with Counselor Gould, to move to request a presentation and update from James Freeman, the pension administrator, and Mike Jingeris, Director of Finance, on the cost of living adjustments, or known, referred to as COLAs, based for retirees and refer to Finance Committee. There was information provided to the committee by Mr. Jingeris and Mr. Freeman. In summary, Mr. Jingeris indicated that the retirement board met, and it was felt that due to the loss of $27 million in market value declines, they stayed with a 3% rather than a 5% cost of living adjustment at the retirement board. Mr. Freeman reiterated that that was not a, that was a result of some lengthy debate, and it was not a unanimous decision, but that was the outcome of the vote at the retirement board. In response to Counselor Manning Martin's questions about why PBD did not make the increase when other communities did, Mr. Freeman indicated he couldn't really speak to what happened in other communities, but that due to the net increase in the number of retirees last year and the loss of 13% in market value, they, the, his feeling, and again, to reiterate, he's not a voting member of the retirement board, but his feeling was that the retirement board opted not to increase the unfunded pension liability that exists today by taking on further COLA amounts. It's, was pointed out that the council doesn't have responsibility for this, and there was no finger pointing going on by any member of the committee or the council, just trying to gain an understanding of why the decision was made by the retirement board. There were some questions by Counselor Gould as, I'm sorry, Counselor Turco, as to why it's believed that the fund is in the vicinity of 50% funded, when other communities have a higher percentage, and Mr. Freeman, and he kind of simplified it by saying that the city has tended to make the minimum requirements each year, whereas other cities and towns have opted to fund that beyond the minimum, which has allowed them to drive up their funding percentage. In response to Counselor Gould's question about it for an explanation of the COLA base, that's the amount, Mr. Freeman explained that's the amount on which the COLA is applied. And it was comments made by Counselor Melville with regard to the importance of this matter, not only with respect to the funding for the unfunded pension liability, but also for the benefits liability that is, exists for the city. There was also a number of comments made by a former, or I should say, retired police officer, Mr. Ken Jones. He provided a lot of facts and information that he had obtained from various sources for informational purposes for the committee. There was a motion made by Counselor Gould to send a letter to the retirement board asking for reconsideration on the increase from 3 to 5%. Mr. Chairman, that, I'm sorry, Mr. President, that motion failed with a vote of 2 to 2, with one present. So, that goes no further at this time. Mr. President, the next item on the agenda was a item C, transfer of funds, school salaries in an amount of $1,44,305. That was presented to us by His Honor, the mayor, and Mr. Jingeris, and, excuse me for just a moment while I find that. This was a requested transfer to bridge a gap for agreements which were released, reached during the year between the school committee and various school department unions to accept a 3% cost of living adjustment. And again, this transfer was requested to fund that shortfall between the total amount negotiated and the amount budgeted for, in the fiscal '23 budget. There was a motion made by Counselor Gould as follows. Moved to approve transfer requests on reserve fund balance, free cash, count number 100000000359901, an amount of $600,000 in school lunch revolving. in school lunch revolving. Account number 2410000035606, an amount of $444,305 to school salaries. Account number 10003000511101100021220016, an amount of $1,044,305. Mr. President, that motion failed, I'm sorry, excuse me, that motion passed the committee unanimously with a vote of 5 to 0, and I'll bring it for consideration of the full council. So moved.
Thank you, Counselor McGinn. Councilors, you've heard the motion. On the motion, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, vote.
Counselors Turco.
Yes.
Daigle.
Yes.
O'Neal.
Yes.
Peach.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Rozagnal.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Welton.
Yes.
Motion carries 9 to 0.
Counselor McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next item on the agenda was Ordinance Amendment, Section 1821, entitled Schedule of Compensation for Full-Time Positions Not Subject to Collective Bargaining, and Ordinance Amendment, Section 21.5 for Recreation Manager. That was presented to us by his honor of the mayor, as well as the Director of Parks and Recreation, Ms. Davis. This was indicated that this is a reclassification of jobs, not truly a new position, or I should say not a headcount adjustment. It is an adjustment in job description and responsibilities and salary to facilitate hiring of positions that they're having difficulty filling. But it was indicated that from the budgeted numbers, it's not a net increase in the headcount. There was a bit of dialogue on this, and ultimately, a motion made by Counselor Gould as follows: Move an ordinance amending the Chapter 21, Article 1 in the general by adding 21-5 Recreation Manager, be it ordained by the City Council or City of PBD, as follows: Position of Recreation Manager is hereby created and established. Section 21.5 Recreation Manager, the duties of the Recreation Manager shall be to perform a variety of recreational programming and administrative duties, including planning and implementing, facilitating and supervising comprehensive recreational programs for the community. In conjunction with the director, this position shall determine the recreational needs of the community, researches, and evaluates new program ideas, oversees the development, organization, implementation, and supervision of programs and special events, including sites located outside the city. Responsible for the development, marketing, scheduling, budgeting, implementation, oversight, and evaluation of recreational programs and event position supervisors, full-time recreation supervisor slash outdoor education coordinator, and various seasonal supervisors, staff, part-time employees. During the summer, this position will directly supervise up to 75 employees. Mr. President, that motion by Counselor Gould passed the Finance Committee unanimously, and I'll bring it for consideration of the full council. So moved.
Thank you, Counselor McGinn. Councilors, you've heard the motion from Counselor McGinn. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, roll call, vote.
Counselors Turco.
Yes.
Daigle.
Yes.
O'Neal.
Yes.
Peach.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Rozagnal.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Welton.
Yes.
Motion carries 9 to 0.
Counselor McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. On that same topic, there was a related motion to address the salary ordinances, and that was also made by Counselor Gould as follows: City of PBD moved that City of PBD, Massachusetts, an ordinance amending Section 1821 entitled Rates of Compensation for Full-Time Positions Not Subject to Collective Bargaining, be it ordained by the City Council or the City of PBD, as follows: Section 1, the ordinance establishing a compensation and classification plan is hereby amended as follows, the code of the City of PBD as adopted on January 23, 1969, and amended, is hereby further amended by deleting from 18-21, the ordinance establishing a compensation and classification plan for Recreation Manager effective July 1, 2022, $72,670. Mr. President, that motion by Counselor Gould passed the Finance Committee unanimously with a 5-0 vote, and I'll bring it for consideration of the full council. So moved.
Thank you, Counselor McGinn. Councilors, you've heard the motion. On the motion, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, vote.
Counselors Turco.
Yes.
Daigle.
Yes.
O'Neal.
Yes.
Peach.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Rozagnal.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Welton.
Yes.
Motion carries 9 to 0.
Counselor McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. The next item on the agenda was Item E, Transfer of Funds, Endicott Street Bridge, in an amount of $195,000, brought to us by his honor of the mayor. Mayor explained that work has started on this project today. A number of councilors commented on that and what the expectation was for completion of the project, which should be towards the fall. The mayor explained the need for this additional funding due to costs that have escalated from the point beyond what was estimated at the earlier on due to inflation pressure. There was a motion ultimately made by Counselor Gould as follows: Move to approve the transfer request from account number 1000000035901, unreserved fund balance free cash in amount of $195,000 to account number 30000000582422023000003696, Endicott Street Bridge, an amount of $195,000. Mr. President, that motion passed the Finance Committee unanimously, and I'll bring it for consideration of the full council. So moved.
Thank you, Counselor McGinn. Councilors, you've heard the motion. On the motion, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, vote.
Counselors Turco.
Yes.
Daigle.
Yes.
O'Neal.
Yes.
Peach.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Rozagnal.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Welton.
Yes.
Motion carries 9 to 0.
Counselor McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. The last item on the agenda was Transfer of Fund, Cable Fun Expense, in an amount of $17,425.74, and Cable Fun Expense, in an amount of $3,872.39. Mr. President, that is a, this was brought to us by Mr. Jingeris. It's a routine matter. This was, I believe, the Q4 amount brought to us from RCN, and I need to find 7F. Does anybody have that handy? I seem to have misplaced it. Thank you. There was a motion made by Counselor Gould as follows: To approve the transfer from accounts, from receipts, Reserve Cable Fund, account number 270000033017, an amount of $17,425.74, and account number 270000033017, an amount of $3,872.39 to Cable Fun Expense, account number 270000053007, an amount of $17,425.74, and account number 270000053007, an amount of $3,872.39. Mr. President, that motion passed the Finance Committee unanimously, and I'll bring it for consideration to the full council. So moved.
Thank you, Counselor McGinn. Councilors, you've heard the motion. On the motion, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, vote.
Counselors Turco.
Yes.
Daigle.
Yes.
O'Neal.
Yes.
Peach.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Rozagnal.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Welton.
Yes.
Motion carries 9 to 0.
Counselor McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. That completes the Report of Committee.
Thank you, Counselor McGinn. Councilors, now moving on to motions, orders, and resolutions. Counselor Turco.
Mr. President, move to receive, under suspension of the rules, move to receive Item 8E.
Councilors, you've heard the motion. On the motion, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote. Counselor Turco.
Mr. President, for you as the Ward One Counselor and others that may be interested, just if you could take a look at Item 8E, young man that I've known since he was in kindergarten, Matthew Richards, amazing young man from a, from a great family, his two siblings that are also just very, very, very good kids. He was recently attained the rank of Eagle Scout, which, as we all know, is extremely difficult, and there'll be an event, the Court of Honor has been scheduled for May 21st at 4:30 at the Community Covenant Church at 33 Lake Street, for anybody that's interested in attending. Matthew is also, he just was recently accepted to Worcester Polytechnic, who he'll be, he'll be attending in the fall for civil engineering, so, very good kid. If anybody's around for that day, it'd be a great event to, to pay tribute to, to the young man. Mr. President, move to...
On the motion.
Yes.
On the, on the motion, would you, can we amend that to send a commendation from the City Council?
Thank you. For the reminder, I meant to do that, Mr. President, on the, on the motion, could we send a commendation for the achievement of Matthew on behalf of the entire PBD City Council?
Absolutely. On that motion, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to set up a Public Services Subcommittee meeting, and the topic of that Subcommittee meeting would be the progress on the river and stream cleanup, and I'd like to invite Mr. Lazarus from the Conservation Commission and Mr. Politz. There has been some progress in that since we discussed it several years ago, so, one, we could fit that in, Allison, if you could schedule that. And secondarily, a Drug Awareness and Education Committee, and with that, I'd like to invite Colleen Bertolino and her husband Leo Bertolino. Colleen teaches a course on drug addiction. As you know, Colleen and Leo are PBD residents. Colleen has spent pretty much the last 20 years teaching courses on how to deal with drug addiction as a family, and I would like to have her come before us and just give a brief presentation on that program that she runs. In addition to, I would also like to invite Sharon Cameron, as well as Mike Gingrich, to discuss the opioid settlements, and we haven't heard anything about where that money has been allocated since we were first notified of it a few months back, and I believe, you know, we've been waiting for something. So, if you could add that topic, Allison, to the agenda also, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Turco. Turco.
My apologies, and if Counselor Melville has no objection, I was thinking maybe one of those two subcommittees to piggyback on the charter at the end. The Colleen Bertolino Drug Awareness may work well right after charter for 30 minutes, and then this week we'd save some time during the regular meeting.
I think that's a great idea.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Turco. Moving on to Counselor Daigle.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do have one motion regarding 15 King Street. After two motions through the City Council, several emails and phone calls asking for an update on the status of the 40B project from Hemisphere Development, at 15 King Street, I have received no response. I walk the perimeter regularly, including today, and there are several locations of the building that are not secure, so I would like to make a motion to request that the Building Commissioner and Health Department inspect the property, condemn it if appropriate, and issue daily fines if applicable. So moved.
Thank you, Counselor Daigle. Councilors, you've heard the motion from Counselor Daigle. Any discussion? Counselor Gould.
Counselor Daigle, I totally agree with you. Can we make it an emergency preamble and have them act on that? I know it's our team, and they will, they will act on it, but it just brings it to a, to a head. I don't know if that's appropriate, Allison. Okay.
Thank you, Counselor Gould. Counselor Daigle, would you be one to amend your motion to, under emergency preamble?
So moved.
So now, so now we will take two roll call votes. So first will be for the emergency preamble, and second will be for the motion made from Counselor Daigle. So first for the emergency preamble, roll call, vote.
Counselors Turco.
Yes.
Daigle.
Yes.
O'Neal.
Yes.
Peach.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Rozagnal.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Welton.
Yes.
Motion carries 9 to 0.
Thank you, councilors. Now for the motion made from Counselor Daigle. Roll call, vote. Actually, we can skip and do all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor Daigle.
No further motions. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Daigle. Counselor O'Neal.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under suspension of rules, move to receive Item 8D and refer that to Legal Affairs. So moved.
Councilors, you've heard the motion from Counselor O'Neal. On the motion, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor O'Neal.
Further motions, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor O'Neal. Counselor Peach.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under suspension of the rules, move to receive Item 8B and set up a special permit hearing for May 25th.
Thank you, Counselor Peach. Councilors, you've heard the motion. On the motion, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor Peach.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under suspension of the rules, move to receive Item 8G.
Thank you, Counselor Peach. All in favor, any opposed? It's a vote. Counsel Peach.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have any further motions. I did just want, I know we spoke about it a few times tonight. I just want to let the public know, Endicott Street from Lowell Street to Warren Street will shut down on May 10th. They're doing some work there now, as the mayor stated, and a robocall did go out. I drive that road every single day, so I just, for everyone else that also drives it, I see you in traffic, just find an alternate route, and now might be a good time to start looking for that alternate route as National Grid and PMLP do their work over the next two weeks. But May 10th, I believe, is the date that they are closing the road, and they anticipate reopening it early November. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Peach. Counselor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a co-motion with Counselor Peach to have a tree trimmed or looked at. It might not be savable at 7 Evans Road. So moved.
Counsel Gould, would you mind repeating that address for the clerk?
Sure, 7 Evans Road.
Thank you, Counsel Gould. Councilors, you've heard the motion. On the motion, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote. Counsel Gould.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a co-motion with Counselor O'Neal to have the fire hydrant looked at on the corner of Lowell and Herrick. There happens to be a hole in the bonnet, which is the outside cap, and just, safety-wise, I'm not sure if that's something to be looked at. So moved.
Thank you, Counsel Gould. Councilors, you've heard the motion. On the motion, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote. Counsel Gould.
No further motions, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Gould. Counselor Rozagnal.
No motions.
Thank you, Counselor Rozagnal. Counselor Melville.
Under suspension of the rules, move to receive Item 8F, the Memorial Day activities on Monday, May 29th.
Thank you, Counselor Melville. Councilors, you've heard the motion. On the motion, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote. Counsel Melville.
Under suspension of the rules, move to approve, with all papers being in order, Item 9A, Junk Dealer's License, Charlin Appliance Center, 15 Spring Street, and Taxi Limo Driver's License, John J. Calley, License 26. So moved.
Thank you, Counselor Melville. Councilors, you've heard the motion. On the motion, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote. Counsel Melville.
I do have a motion. It's to request for the city solicitor to provide, it's a request the city solicitor to provide language regarding the city ordinances with regards to the power of the city council or a city agency to either suspend, revoke, or fine a special permit licensee. So moved.
Thank you, Counselor Melville. Councilors, you've heard the motion. On the motion, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote. Counsel Melville.
Lastly, and I'll, I don't know if Counselor McGinn wanted to mention, but the major step was taken at the Welch School. They now have, front of the building has been completed, and I have to tell you, it's really remarkable, and it's something we should all be proud of. It's not an easy project, hasn't been easy on the students or the parents or the families, but it's really making some great progress and something we can be proud of. And that will conclude my motions, orders, and resolutions this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Melville. Counselor McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President, and appreciate the comments by Counselor Melville on the progress at the Welch School. It is remarkable. I think we were at meeting 34, was it, today, of the Welch School Building Committee meeting? So it has been a long and arduous process, and it is great to see the results starting to happen and to see students actually being able, and staff, benefit from all the hard work that's gone into this. Mr. President, under suspension of the rules, move to receive Item 7A, refer to finance, so moved.
Thank you, Counselor McGinn. Counselors, you've heard the motion. On the motion, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote. Counselor McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under suspension of the rules, move to receive Item 7B, refer to finance, so moved.
Thank you, Counselor McGinn. Counselors, you've heard the motion. On the motion, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote. Counselor McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under suspension of the rules, move to receive Item 7C, refer to finance, so moved.
Thank you, Counselor McGinn. On the motion, you've heard, you've heard Counselor McGinn's motion. On the motion, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote. Counselor McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under suspension of the rules, move to receive Item 7D, refer to finance, so moved.
Thank you, Counselor McGinn. On the motion, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under suspension of the rules, move to receive Late Communication, Number 2, and refer to finance, so moved.
Thank you, Counselor McGinn. On the motion, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote. Counselor McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under suspension of the rules, move to receive Item 8A and refer to that upcoming hearing, so moved.
Thank you, Counselor McGinn. Counselors, you've heard the motion. On the motion, any discussion?